I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order, please. So call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. This is a regular meeting for Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. Madam Clerk, will you please call the rule?
I will. Tim Hale, are you on the phone yet? Madam Mayor, he is going to be. Is that him?
There's a dog barking.
Stephanie Nowers.
I'm sorry.
We have a dog here, too. Do you want us to put him on, see if he'll bark back?
They can talk to each other.
I'm expecting D. McKee. Robert Yunt.
Here.
Moki Two.
Here.
Dmitry Fana.
Over here.
Ron Bernier, are you on the phone? I'm also expecting him, Madam Mayor. You do have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there anything that the members would like to pull from the consent agenda? Okay. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, and the agenda is approved as presented, we all rise. And Christine, can I have you lead us in the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The record showed that Assemblyperson Ron Brewer has joined us at, I don't know, 6:02, I guess. So I'm going to go ahead and go down. We're going to go ahead and do the Voice's proclamation first because a number of them have soccer practice and games, and we don't want them to be late. We're not a good excuse. I don't think the coaches are going to buy that. Well, we were at the Borough Building. This is the official proclamation, and this is the one I'm going to read. Whereas the Valley Thunder Under-16 Hockey Team is a team which features players from all four of the Matsui Valley Prep Hockey Programs and one player from Kenai. And whereas Valley Thunder U-16 coaches Jamie Smith and Sean Hall, along with manager Christine Greco, lead their team to win the USA Hockey U-16 Tier II National Championship. Let's give them a round of applause. Whereas according to Coach Smith, winning multitude games in overtime was shorthanded goals just doesn't happen. But that is what the Valley Thunder did. They played outstanding in the tournament and won the championship title in a two-to-one win over the Arizona Junior Sun Devils. And whereas the Valley Thunder also won their third straight state championship, they are the Termination Dust Tournament Champions, the 907 Tournament Champions, Arizona Turkey Shootout Champions, and they finished this season with a record of 55 to four overall. And whereas multitudes of team players excel, and the Matsui community is extremely proud of the hard work and dedication and talent that has motivated this team and where it is, with my great pleasure to honor this team and the outstanding athletes. Thank you for coming, and thank you for representing. Okay, come, sir. Whereas the Reddington family has a long history with the Iditarod Trail Sled Dog Race, and Joe Reddington Senior is known as a father of the Iditarod. And whereas Joe Reddington Senior organized the Iditarod Trail Dog Race, also known as the Last Great Race, to save the dog sledding culture in Alaska and to preserve the historical Iditarod Trail. And whereas the Iditarod Trail is roughly 1,000 miles long, crossing two mountain ranges and crossing many frozen waterways, including packed ice, and whereas it takes a lot of preparation, training, hard work, and fortitude to take part in the Last Great Race. And whereas Ryan Reddington continues the family legacy of dogs racing and raising awareness for the sport of dog sledding. And whereas Ryan Redding has been doing dog sledding his entire life, that's not very long, people, and has continued this tradition with his own children. And where's Isaac? He's there. He has a young, yes, can you stand, please? Thank you. There's a young Reddington. So in a few years, when I'm gone, and then lots of other people are here, you'll be honoring him. Now therefore, it is resolved that I, as the mayor, and the assembly, all of the people up there, recognize and congratulate Ryan Reddington on his historical win of the 51st Iditarod Trail Sled Dog Race. And we have this. That's it? Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
And to add to this, thank you, Mayor, and to Ryan personally, I just want to say I was honored to help to set up this event. I didn't prepare anything specific, but I didn't want to say thank you for friendship. Today, I calculated it's 27 years since we went and started middle school and the high school together. This is definitely a historic achievement. It's one of those things that you always follow somebody who you personally know through standing and things they had. And watching you when you were getting to the top spots over there, it was, I felt like a little bit of, kind of like a connection there, knowing that you've known somebody for so long, and having so many times that you've attempted to do this, and you've completed many successful finishes, but you actually finished on top. And it was a, it was a very, I'm very proud of you. And when I talked to you on the phone, you probably, I didn't ask him for permission, but I told him, when did you know that you won this thing? You know, because he was several hours ahead to the, you know, his second person who was second in line. And he said, well, there was a last stretch of, oh, 50 miles or whatever, it says, it got really, really windy, to a point where you couldn't see the dogs getting lost to one side and another type of thing. And he says, at that time, I was thinking, how do I survive? Not, how do I win? Or if I'm in the best, how do I survive? And that's one thing is, kind of like, lesson to me personally, and hopefully to all of us, is when we'll go through that kind of difficult challenges and races, not necessarily only think about placing number one, but just doing the right thing and being a good example. And today, I'm honored that you're here, and you're showing us example of true warrior spirit. And I personally want to say thank you so much.
The next item on our agenda is there are no minutes that are being presented. Then the next item after that is report from the cities. I don't see anybody here from either one of the three cities. The next item is Matsui Borough School District, and we do have a special presentation.
Hi, my name is Laura Anderson. I am the librarian at Wasilla High School. And I just kind of want to tell you guys everything that's going on in the library. See, I got to go back one.
Back one? Is that good?
Go back one more.
Uh-oh. Give me a second.
Did my seven minutes start, or not yet?
No.
Okay.
That's as far back as I want to go.
All right, so the library at Wasilla High is a really big space. It's almost 5,000 square feet. It was just filled with desktop computers. So my boss came to me, and we started talking. And we were like, how do we make more use of this space? What's a better use of this space? So we're taking the library, we're splitting it into three parts. We have our traditional library for reading and research. The middle section is a maker's space, fabrication lab for hands-on learning. A lot of kids don't learn just by, you know, hearing and listening to lecture. They got to get in there. They have to figure out what's wrong with it. That's kind of how they learn. And then the last big piece is a job career center, where we have resume building, mock interviews, professionalism, professional dress, taxes, budgeting, credit, voting, investing, kind of all these adult skills. We really want to implement to the next generation. So here is a kind of mock-up of the space. So you can see, on one side, we still have the books retained there. In the middle, you can see along the wall, there's 3D printers. And then on the other side, there's kind of a lecture hall like you would see in a university, and that's where our professional development is. Thank you. And I just wanted to show you this because a lot of people, when we were doing this transformation, they were really worried, oh, you're getting rid of books, you're getting rid of books. No, we're not. We're not getting rid of reading. So I wanted to kind of put some of the stats here, how we compare to Colony High School and Palmer High School. So as you can see, as you go down, we're really on trend with all these big schools in the valley. And individual users, I want to point out, these are the kids that are checking out books for pleasure, like, not for just, you know, this is my chemistry book, this is my physics book. No, they're checking out things because they want to read. So I wanted to show you this as well, just to make you aware that we're not getting rid of that, you know, traditional element. It's staying there. So here's one picture of before and after of the new professional development center. So we had people from the community, actually, former Assemblyman Sumner laid the floors in there. And then here, we have some students using this space. They use it for the calculus class. You can see this wall is a whiteboard wall, and they absolutely love it. So they've got all these differential equations up there. And here are some other things we're doing in this space. So we have clubs after school. We have Battle of the Books. We have D and D Club. We have Chess Club. We had the Mad Valley Federal Credit Union come and do like a real-world life, where kids would go through and they'd have financial decisions to make. Oh, we want to sell you a boat or a sports car. And the kids would kind of have to see how that fit in their budget. And then on the right, we have one of our students using one of the new lasers in there to finish a mythology final. Also, a big thing is during this transformation, the kids are a huge, huge part of this. They're learning how to paint. They're learning how to do things. We actually had a competition where we wanted the art class to create new logos, kind of something industrial to put on the wall. And now we're working with the wood shop. We're going to 3D print it. We're going to make it bigger. We're going to put it up. And the kids are really excited to be part of the process. And then I put these decorative gears. One of the kids in the wood shop made those, and they're just fantastic. Oh, no. And so here was a list of all the people that donated to the library. So up to this point, I've actually gotten $51,000 in local community support from different local business owners, different people. Sometimes it's $1, sometimes it's $5,000. So so far, it's $51,000 that we've been able to raise to get the community kind of behind this effort because they really like seeing we're coming up with these new innovative ways of learning and helping kids become the best versions of adults they can be. Here's the kids working on it. So here's my budget. It's a $100,000 budget, and I kind of have it laid out there. Oh, man, what's up with my PowerPoint? So the last part, which is the best part, I think, is a job kiosk. So the kiosk actually will link their resumes directly, and we'll come together with local people. We actually have five businesses right now that are like contracting jobs, plumbers, electricians, carpenters. So kids can get in, they can do apprenticeships, paid apprenticeships, directly out of high school, or even sometimes in high school. So this kiosk is going to be, kids will go up there, they'll link their resumes, and they'll get connected with somebody locally, so we can address this big gap in trade labor that's in the valley right now. So that is the end of it. And I guess my ask is, I've raised $51,000 so far, and I was hoping, I don't really know how the protocol goes, but maybe the city or the borough or the district could somehow match some of this money to help me finish this project. Thank you.
Okay, so Assemblyperson Hale has joined us on the phone at 6:17. Oh, and D's here. And Assemblyperson McKee has also joined us. We have a report from the state, Alaska, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and Assembly, staff, and constituents. Todd Smolden with the Governor's Office in the Matsui. Just wanted to say, first of all, of course, we already all knew this, but the Matsui is the best part of the state of Alaska. National winning hockey teams, Iditarod winners, and librarians who are entrepreneurial in how to reach students, and the list goes on and on. So I just wanted to just first say thank you to the three Assemblymembers who have put forward Resolution 23-046 in support of the Governor's parental rights legislation. Reading through your resolution, it couldn't be more clear what the legislation is about. And your resolution is very clear and speaks very clearly to this legislation as being something that supports parents as well as their children and schools. And so I appreciate you putting that forward. I'm sure the Governor does as well. And then the only other thing that I had is just looking forward to meeting with manager and mayor tomorrow with the Governor. So I will make sure he's ready to listen to all your asks. He always is, but it'll be a good meeting, so I look forward to that. I don't know if you have any questions. I know you're probably going to have a pretty busy meeting, so I will take them if you have any. But if not, I certainly understand.
Nope, I guess not, sir. Thank you.
All right. I have a family commitment, so I'm going to have to listen to the meeting at home tonight. But thank you again for your service.
Thank you for your service. Okay, next is our Matt Nuskes, who's sitting in the Borough Library Board.
The clicker should still be down there for you to operate to.
Good evening. I'm Georgia Kanazovic from the MSB Library Board. Stories of engagement and empowerment for everyone. Libraries today are evolving, adapting to changing times and sources of information. Your Borough Libraries have followed that trend and have become community resource centers that encourage engagement and empowerment for everyone. Thank you for making this aspect of libraries possible in the borough. The benefit in return on that investment comes back to the borough manyfold. If you regularly visit a Borough Library, you know they're engaging, educational, enriching all the E's you see here to meet community needs. Our report spotlights only three E's by sharing Borough resident stories of engagement and empowerment for everyone at Matsui Libraries. You'll see their words on the following slides, but they're also on the handouts that are available. Each Borough's library is unique, but all offer services to engage their communities. Literacy and reading skills are once again in the Alaskan spotlight. While literacy and reading are important, interpersonal activity during programs is important, too. Both storytimes and summer reading programs provide the foundation for these reading skills, but also offer the added benefit of interpersonal engagement among children, parents, and volunteers. Parents enjoy some rare and precious time with each other during and after storytime, fostering friendships. And from another young mom. Summer reading programs for all ages provide information and fun, and all in a safe place. The reading mentor program at the Talkeetna Library pairs adults and teen reading mentors with K through three students. Both the children and their mentors benefit. And from a librarian. We all know the challenges that winter brings, but for many who live off the grid, the dark, cold days of winter can often be overwhelming. Having a warm, light place to meet your neighbors brightens the dark. Empowerment. Sometimes the world overwhelms. Gaining some power over your life is important. Libraries empower people by providing access to crucial resources and services, helping them to stay in touch with the rest of the world. Sometimes it just requires a helping hand. More and more governments at all levels are using e-services. As you may know, navigating those can be frustrating. Libraries not only offer computers, but the staff provides help to access, fill out, and submit forms. PFD forms and census are only two examples of these uses. As technology has changed, it's difficult for those in older age brackets to keep up with it. Computer classes, as well as other classes at the library, help. Summer and youth programs provide a means to empower the community's youth. Here's a photo of a hiking trip from one of Sutton's summer youth programs and a statement from one of the adult volunteers. Libraries are America's most democratic institutions. Having a central location for voting and community activities is crucial to the democratic process, as this letter from Trapper Creek illustrates. The Jessica Stevens Community Foundation chose the library as the venue for workshops for 52 community members who, at the end of the session, had wills and health care directives which were notarized by the library staff. Libraries are for everyone. Borough libraries embrace their responsibility to their communities by providing a space for everyone with programs for the entire community. Everyone has a place in their library. Libraries step up during emergencies, whether it's flood, earthquake, or fire. Local libraries provide information, help, and support to responders in their community. Libraries are central to their communities. The staff knows their communities well. This makes them one of the most efficient ways to reach everyone. The McKinley Fire was just one example. The photo you see is one of a firefighter on the phone reading a bedtime story to their child back home. One of Sutton's many programs is a music evening where everyone is welcome. There you have it. Libraries provide services and resources to all ages, economic levels, educational levels, ethnicities, political leanings, religious beliefs, sizes, shapes, lifestyles, you name it. If you know anyone without a library card, do encourage them to get one. It's a ticket to engagement and empowerment for everyone. Thank you for supporting your libraries yesterday, today, and tomorrow, as they continue to evolve and meet the community needs in the Matsui. Thank you. Questions?
I guess not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will have a report from our Matsui Convention and Visitors Bureau. Bonnie?
Madam Mayor, members of the Assembly, and Manager Brown, I'm here to give you a brief update on the activities of the Matsui Convention and Visitors Bureau, and a forecast for the coming summer visitor season. I'm going to follow the managers' budget department presentations from last week, listing our accomplishments and our goals for fiscal year 2024. But first, I'm really happy. But first, I'm really happy to be here tonight, on the night that Ryan Reddington is honored for being the champion of this year's Iditarod. Thank you so much for bringing him here. The Iditarod is one of our state's most celebrated events, and we own it in the Matsu. Many professional mushers in the valley open their kennels to provide an authentic experience, and we promote including a visit to a kennel to learn about our dog mushing heritage in our itineraries. Last month, we hosted photographer Tom Bull on a week-long photo shoot during Iditarod, and now have over 400 images of winter activities and sport. Our opportunity and goal is to extend the shoulder season and increase winter visitation. We also captured many of the sporting events that will be in the Arctic Winter Games to use in a promotional campaign leading up to the event. Along with tourism promotion, the Matsu CDB provides trip planning resources for people looking to visit. In 2022, our website, alaskavisit.com, had over 320,000 unique visitors driven by our paid and organic search. This year, our goal is to increase our website visits by 25%. Updating our content, images, user-generated content, and posting weekly blogs has kept our organic traffic search above industry standards. We printed 100,000 Matsu visitor guides in January and have direct mailed over 40,000 to visitors requesting information through the State of Alaska Tourism Campaign. And by June 1st, over 60,000 visitor guides will be in the hands of people actively planning an Alaska vacation. In February, a co-op ad with Alaska Travel Industry Association in AARP Magazine produced over 2,500 requests for our visitor guide. In addition, we fulfill requests from our website and other Alaska publications. In February, we attended the largest consumer adventure travel show in LA along with a dozen other Alaska destinations and suppliers. In March, we participated in the Holland America Princess Destination Showcase Consumer Show in Seattle, distributing trip planning information to cruisers looking to add independent land excursions and extend their stay. And we also attended the Matsu Outdoor Show at the Menard Center. Last weekend, we had a booth at the Great Alaska Sportsman Show. And this weekend, we'll be at the Fairbanks Outdoor Show. So early indications are that 2023 will be a successful one for the visitor industry with a record number of cruise visitors, highway borders open, and a gradual return of international and business travel. The largest hotel in the Borough, the Mount McKinley Princess Wilderness Lodge, will reopen on May 11th, and the Talkeetna Alaska Lodge has remained open since March. Bed tax collections in FY '22 exceeded pre-COVID numbers of FY '19. And we project bed taxes in FY '23, ending on June 30th, to reach nearly $2 million. An increase in independent visitors and also an increase in the average daily rate, or what we call the ADR, along with more short-term rentals are contributing to those projections. Well, headwinds and uncertainties include staffing shortages, a large uptick in the cost of travel, and an alley park road impacts. We also anticipate a more competitive environment from tourism promotion from other national and international destinations. But there is a pent-up demand to travel to Alaska. Current financial sentiment may keep Americans from spending as freely as they did a year ago. However, record levels of travel enthusiasm keeps them planning trips. Nearly 85% of Americans surveyed say they have trips planned, and that was reported by destination analysts this month. During the pandemic, we ramped up our in-state resident and visiting friends and relatives campaign. We will be reactivating our Trails-themed campaign in late May in a targeted online and print campaign in South Central. Starting last week, we are the featured destination in Scott McMurren's Alaska Travel Gram Newsletter, highlighting Matsu activities and resident specials. We are active on our four social media channels with over a dozen posts weekly, excuse me, and adding to our robust calendar of events. We have two major tourism opportunities heading our way. The 2024 Arctic Winter Games and the $6.7 million EDA grant to complete the construction of the Matsu Valley Gateway Visitor Center. Our organization has been instrumental in bringing these economic opportunities to the Borough. The Arctic Winter Games will bring a spotlight to the Matsu Borough. Through our public relations efforts, we have identified several travel writers with assignments from national publications to bring up and host during the March 2024 Games. And that will provide articles long past the closing ceremonies highlighting the Matsu Borough. I'm almost done, Madam Mayor. We've also dedicated up to 15 hours a week of our staff time to the leadership team. We're looking forward to the groundbreaking of the Gateway Visitor Center. It's been over 13 years since we completed a feasibility study to relocate and replace the old log visitor center that became buried in the Matsu Medical Campus. The EDA ward and construction of the new Gateway Visitor Center will be another reason for visitors to choose the Matsu. And finally, I want to share this small postcard we recently produced to highlight and communicate what it is exactly what we do. It has a QR code on it, and it links to a two-minute video. We'll be presenting at upcoming chamber meetings and community councils. So our name is confusing. We don't operate a convention center. Residents don't see our promotional efforts because we highly target our online and print outside of the Borough. We wanted to connect the dots to the value that a visitor to our destination and the economic impacts of tourism promotion. So I'm going to hand these to the clip.
Do you have any questions?
Yes. Assemblyperson Yonk.
First of all, thanks for all you do. When I first came in in 2020, you guys were in the heart of COVID. And I know there were probably some scary times to be in the business that you guys are, and you've handled it excellent, in my opinion, in my three years here. So real quick, can you just, I'm just curious what the numbers were. Where were we pre-COVID on 19 for bed tax collection? And what were we for 2022?
So FY '19, you can check with finance, but FY '19 was about 1.4 million. And in FY '22, we exceeded that by about 50,000. And we do predict with the way the bed taxes have come in so far this year, and also, again, with the increase of the average daily rate, the increase of independence, and also the increase, excuse me, of the short-term rentals, we plan to be near $2 million.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Uh huh. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is committee reports, and we do not have a report from the Joint Assembly and School Board Committee because they have not met. Are there any public relation reports? Okay, no. So Mr. Manager, we're ready for you and your report, sir.
Yeah, just two items. The first one will be very brief. Today is the Valley Center for Recycling Solutions, or VCRS is. They're celebrating 25 years today. So we just wanted to wish them and congratulate them on this great milestone and thank them for their service to our community. Also, the Matsu Orchestra is presenting a benefit performance for VCRS on Sunday, April 23rd, at the Glenn Massey Theater. All donations benefit VCRS, so just wanted to acknowledge that as they are a partner of the Matsu Borough. Second topic, I'm going to invite Jason up to talk about the American Charter Academy 35% Design Presentation. So it's really, we should be hitting those gates of a 35% and 95% design for any schools, for both the school board and the Assembly. American Charter currently is located in a leased facility or strip mall at the corner of Parks Highway and Pittman Road. The Assembly already approved a future school site at the corner of Selden and Church Roads. So that's what you're going to see tonight. The Charter School has funded the design for this new facility, not the funding for the actual construction. And tonight, Jason from Wolf Architecture will provide an overview of the 35% design.
Great. Thank you. Thanks to the Mayor, Assembly Manager, for the opportunity to present the work that we've done so far on this school. American Charter Academy is an existing school of about 200 students, K through 12. Majority of the students are elementary students. The main school design focus has been on really a lot of pragmatics, functional, practical, safe school, low-maintenance facility, well-made systems and finishes, make sure that it's cost-effective and energy-efficient. So we've been looking at energy modeling for the building throughout the design process. That process began with an initial education specification looking at the requirements for the school and for the operation of it. The school program was confirmed, so the request for proposal had the required spaces for the school, and so we just confirmed those spaces with the teachers, principal, and the students. We've been having bi-weekly meetings every other week with the school district representatives, Borough Project Manager, the American Principal, and the teachers. We had the students in there for a little while, too, but I think they got tired when we were talking budget and master planning and stuff like that. Went through concept designs, basic plans. I think we went over 15 site designs for the project, making sure to optimize the use of the existing site. Confirming budget costs at each meeting, especially multiple times within the meeting because it's really been a focus of the project. Looking at plans and three-dimensional designs at the 35%, and then moving into design development and moving forward will be into construction documents. The basic program for the school consists of general admin areas, a gym, a multipurpose room of about 5,000 square feet, 12 classrooms, including science and art classroom. The classrooms also, there's primary, multi-age, elementary, and the secondary, science and art. Media and library storage is broken out into the individual classrooms. So it's a little non-traditional in that it doesn't have a centralized library, but each classroom has its own individual library and media storage that are representative of the student population for that classroom. And then utility spaces and exterior playfields. Total size for the school is just over 25,000 square feet. On the site, you can see to the right, the main existing entrance off of Church Road where we're reusing an existing gravel access drive, trying to minimize the impact on that site. Reference map is a little bit hard to see down there, but really, this school is centrally located in the heart of the Borough. To the north and west, this site has, we're staying clear of those. We've tried to keep the footprint for the school and all the playfields and parking really compact, minimize cost and minimize development there. We've tried to optimize the grades, so utilizing existing grades, utilizing existing fill for using underneath the school and underneath the footprint for the fields. And to the north, you can see a gravel lot that'll be overflow parking. It's an existing gravel lot that's there. We tried to keep access relatively simple, one big loop, but isolate the bus and the cars. So to the north, the main horizontal driveline is drop-off and pickup for parents in cars. In the bottom, the loop coming around the south end of that is the bus drop-off and pickup lane, and that has direct access from the classroom exit at the east side of the building. We've got three lanes coming out off of Church Roads that we've got the additional left-turn lane, overflow parking that I mentioned to the north, and operations and maintenance access around to the west and southwest. And to the very far southwest of the page, you can see another existing gravel pad, so that's for future expansion for fields for the school. First floor plan, the main entrance is just to the, the gym is to the, and multipurpose room is to the left. The main entrance is just to the right of that, the vestibule, the waiting area, reception, and the admin areas. The corridor leads to all the classrooms off that. Primary are the light blue to the plan north, elementary. There's three elementaries there to the plan south, and art just to the left of that. Mechanical and utility spaces off of the gym, again, kind of accessed off the backside of the school for O and M. Second floor plan has two of the elementary schools or classes to the bottom right. Secondary, we've got Language Arts and Social Studies to the north, and math to the south middle, and then science to the far left. Sped and Staff Work Room and a student store off the main central circulation. One of the other things you'll see on this, too, is that rather than having grouped washrooms and then having the students travel the hallways for the washrooms, each classroom has a washroom. And so it exceeds our washroom calculation required, but it also gives the teachers easier control over the students and their classroom time. Exterior 3D rendering, tried to keep the materials cost-effective and low-maintenance. So it's all metal siding. The center focus is the entryway, and so we've got a number of colored panels to break up that and make that a little bit more presentable. Security, we've definitely taken a close look at cost-effective security measures for this school. A lot of it's things that we've done on the larger high schools and more current projects, but we'll have perimeter cameras throughout. We'll also have speakers that are tied into the main system outside the building. There'll be access card readers at exterior doors. The main entry doors will have a door lock and access buzzer from the reception desk. The classroom doors and the access inside the school will all be on mag locks with a central lockdown system. There's security grills at the reception and across the main corridor, security cameras outside, and then a couple within the main common spaces at the stairwells, sight lighting throughout, and then across the parking lot. And then there's a security gate back around the school, limiting maintenance staff, or limiting that area of the maintenance staff, and a summertime security gate at the main front entrance. And we talked a little bit about the energy efficiency. So we've energy modeled the facility, compared it to kind of a standard baseline code, but also their existing facility. And so the graph on the far left, you can see the first bar is their existing facility, and the third one over is their new design facility. So we're showing a 46% savings, about $30,000 a year for that new facility. And that's it. Thanks for your time. Any questions?
Question? Yes. Assemblyperson Yonk, go ahead.
I noticed the single-use bathrooms in the classroom immediately. That's awesome, in my opinion. It cuts down on kids finding reasons to get out of class for a long time. And then, but next to it, that looks like a little kitchenette, possibly, next to it. Is that what that is? Maybe microwave, fridge? I was going to ask, where do the students eat? Are they going to eat in classrooms? Because I didn't see a big cafeteria.
Because I didn't see a big cafeteria.
Yeah, they're going to eat in the classrooms. The, it's what they currently do. We looked at trying to do a more central kitchen, but it requires the staffing, it's a multiples of hundreds of thousands of dollars for the commercial kitchen as well. And while the school nutrition services can handle the additional workload, it limits that use for that kitchen to only nutrition services staff, right? So the school can't use that for additional functions for events and stuff like that. So it really limited the, the desire to have that within the school program. So yeah, each, each group of class, or each classroom has the lunch in each classroom. The kitchenette has two microwaves, and then they've got a, another larger kitchenette for staff and for events off that, off the multi-purpose room, there's a conference room.
Yeah, this is a very efficient floor plan. There's no wasted space there, so right down to, you know, the amount of square footage used up for people to travel within. That's always something I pay close attention to, but I want to pat the leadership at this school on their back. We've changed our legislative, I don't say change, we amended our legislative priorities here, and we are asking for the state to participate in the future to help us with our charter schools. It's my understanding that American has paid to get to this 35% design on their own. Is that, is that the case, Manager Brown?
They paid for that.
I believe that's correct. I'm seeing a nod north in the back of the room. Katie Gardner's here from the school district, so if there's additional questions there.
I think that's awesome, and if, you know, if the state does participate one of these days and they only give us enough for one, I think this school is definitely in the pole position because of the, they're willing to invest in themselves. So only other question I got is just educated guess, I know you're only at 35%, but we talking 500 a foot, 700 a foot, 600, kind of any idea on what the cost of this would be?
Yeah, over 500 a square foot.
Over five.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's a very difficult time for construction costs. We've seen, you know, 30% twice over, so increases.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Yes, Assemblyperson McKee, go ahead.
Yeah, I was looking on the security, oops, door locks with access buzzer and intercom. How do, does the general public just stroll through the front door? Do you have something that tightens that down a little bit, or how far in do they get before somebody knows they're there?
The, they come to the front door, there's a security camera at the front door, and the reception has monitors there, similar to a lot of the elementary schools and, and even high schools. There's a, a door buzzer, a doorbell, they ring in, the front desk staff can let them in from there. We've got windows kind of along that perimeter too, so they can see out.
So they can't just walk in? I mean...
No. It's open, it's open during drop-off and pickup times, but that's when it's, it's limited to that.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Was that all your report, sir? Okay. Mr. Attorney, do you have a report, sir?
I do not, other than I'll be out of the office for the remainder of the week. I'll be back next Tuesday for the workday and then the budget meeting up in Willow. I'm heading to Washington DC for the municipal attorneys conference. I'm the state chair for the National Municipal Attorneys Conference. I'm proctoring a couple of the presentations and then meeting with my professional colleagues, and we all share a lot of issues, so I'm looking forward to talking with people.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Clerk's report with the upcoming meeting schedule is in your red folder. Just a reminder, next Tuesday, our first budget public hearing is up in Willow at 6:00 PM. And that is it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is citizens and other correspondence. Are there any comments on the citizens and other correspondence? Okay, seeing none, they are presented. Madam Clerk?
IM23077 reporting the conclusion of contract for bid number 22075B with Anchorage Roofing and Contracting for a final contract amount of $874,030.49 for the Wasilla Pool roof replacement.
Are there any comments on the IM? Hearing none, it is presented. We do not have any persons to be heard under special orders, public hearings.
Ordinance 23005, an ordinance prohibiting onsite consumption of marijuana until such time as the state of Alaska adopts a numerical standard for operating a vehicle while under the influence of marijuana or a numerical standard for the presumption of being under the influence of marijuana. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Here, looks like we have a staff report, sir.
Madam Mayor, members of the Assembly, Alex Strawn, Planning Director for the Matsui Borough. So in 2014, the, the voters of the state of Alaska voted to make marijuana legal and to adopt 1738, which is an Alaska statute. There was about a two-year period where the state of Alaska worked to adopt rules, administrative code, that would sort of implement that statute that was adopted. During that time, Borough staff also was working to establish regulations for marijuana within the borough. There was actually a moratorium put in place while that happened. And then later on, in 2016, the borough ended up adopting regulations for two different types of facilities. One is standard cultivation facilities, so if you're cultivating greater than 500 square feet within the borough, and then also retail marijuana facilities. Those are the two types of the four different types of facilities that are regulated by the state that the, the borough decided to regulate. So manufacturing facilities are not regulated, nor are limited cultivation facilities or testing facilities. Those are not regulated by the borough, that's solely done by the state, but retail facilities and cultivation facilities. So in, we anticipated when we started issuing marijuana cult, or retail facilities, that there's a possibility that someday down the road, onsite consumption would be made legal. And so every single marijuana retail facility that's ever been issued by the borough, there is a provision in there that we, we put in that said that no onsite consumption is allowed. And so we figured that if someday it was allowed by the state of Alaska, they'd have to come back and modify their permit to get rid of that. So indeed, in 2019, the state of Alaska did amend their laws to allow for onsite consumption through an endorsement of their existing licensed facility. There are some pretty strict rules associated with onsite consumption, one of which would be, there has to be like in an enclosed area that is, there has to be an air handling system that is developed by a, a engineer that will have to develop that air handling system. But, but it is indeed legal, and so what this ordinance does is essentially says that onsite consumption is no longer legal within the borough, so it has it a prohibited use. And then it directs the manager to sort of monitor the state legislature and look for any rule changes associated with providing a numerical standard for presumption of impairment for people who are pulled over for, while driving. So that's a, that's what this ordinance does, ordinance does in a nutshell, and happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I have just a question possibly for Director Strawn or the attorney. Has the legislature, has anyone in the legislature filed any bills that would adopt such a standard?
Through the Mayor to Assemblymember Hale, this is Nick Sporopoulos. No, there's not. There's two bills pending right now, HB 117 and HB 119 with both generally deal, HB 119 deals with marijuana taxes, and then HB 117 is basically changing all the, all the references of cannabis, marijuana to cannabis in the state law, and some other changes. It does address some taxes as well, but nothing with a numerical number.
Okay. Do you have something to add?
So nothing, nothing with a presumption of impairment.
That's correct.
Staff, I think, has comment also. Go ahead, sir.
So not on that question, but one thing I did forget to mention is that the Planning Commission did review this. They, they disagreed with the, they thought it was difficult to come up with a numerical standard for impairment, but they did agree that, that onsite consumption should be prohibited, and they, they stated that in their resolution.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any further questions of staff? Okay, thank you, sir. So I now will open public hearing on ordinance 23-005. Anyone that would like to testify? We do have one person signed up, Bailey Stewart.
Good evening. My name is Bailey Stewart. I'm the owner of Greenjar, the borough's first marijuana retailer, as well as professor at UAA, teaching on the cannabis plant. I'm considered being an expert in the subject matter. Today, I would like to speak on the science behind the proposed ordinance. When researchers came up with the point of eight for alcohol limits, it was backed by decades of research. To do roadside testing was not a simple task, however, with alcohol being water soluble and the fact that it evenly distributes throughout the body, like your saliva, blood, lungs, you can measure the volume of alcohol in one part of your body and predictably tell how much is in any other part of your body, such as your brain, and how you're being affected. But THC is not like that. THC is fat soluble, which is completely changes how it interacts in the body and how it appears in the blood. Unlike alcohol, the height of your intoxication isn't the moment when blood THC levels peak, and the high doesn't, the high doesn't rise and fall uniformly based on how much THC leaves and enters your bodily fluids. Because THC is fat soluble, it moves from water environments, like your blood, to fatty environments, like your brain. THC rapidly clears out of your blood at occasional users within a couple hours while they're still euphoric. Your Planning Commissioner, Rick Allen, spoke to this. He was a district attorney when the marijuana became legal in Anchorage. When a numerical value was being discussed in the Anchorage Police Department, they reviewed the science and made the recommendation that the numerical value was not possible, that the system had failed in both Washington and Colorado's court systems because how THC is metabolized and how the science has come out since legalization. I understand the concern of driving while intoxicated, I share that same concern. However, we trust bars to intervene when someone is considering to get behind the wheel, or we contact local authorities when we could think that there is a case of a DUI. We trust bartenders to stop serving when someone is dangerously intoxicated, and we do the same in onsite consumption lounges. This is in the best interest of the public. Onsite consumption regulations were created because tourism, because of the tourism we see in Alaska. The Marijuana Control Board wanted to provide a safe place for tourism, tourists to consume legally and prevent illegal consumption in public places because the tourists have no other place to go otherwise, unless they have permission of a homeowner, which can be arduous task when you're a visitor in this great state. Our valley sees over three-quarters of a million visitors each year in a region that's only, has a population of about 100,000. This is huge. I see tourists in my store, and the number one question I get is, where can I legally consume? With that said, if we ban insulin consumption, do it because you disagree with onsite consumption and give public notice as such. I ask that we do not do this behind science that does not exist and will not exist. And as a retailer, thank you for your time.
Anyone else that would like to testify on this ordinance? Do we have anybody online, Caleb? We do not? On the last time, anyone here? Okay, so I'll close the public hearing, and Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance 23-005, and if I may, I'd like to speak to it.
Sure, go ahead.
So, um, in 14, when the state passed marijuana, I, I can assure you, I was one of the people that, that thought it was a good idea. I don't think that we should be telling people what they can and cannot do, especially in their own homes. With that being said, there was legislation brought about recently here, maybe four, five, six months ago, that was going to make this legal, unknowingly that it was already legal. I was taken back by it a little bit. I called the Wasilla Police Department, spoke with the chief for quite a while. It just kind of caught me off guard. You know, we've, we've all had alcohol-level legislation as a part of our lives, our entire life, right? So it, it used to be .1 in Alaska, now it's .08, and I was more curious than anything. So I talked to the chief about it, um, and, and he let me know that there is no, there is no level set forth by the state. So I kind of started researching it, and currently, there are 18 states, so, so I want to speak to this too real quick. I just want to mention, the way I wrote this legislation was that we would make it illegal until the state took a stance on it. The science behind all that, I didn't dig into any of that, I honestly, I'm not even worried about it. That's for those 61 folks to figure out if they ever do that, 40 in the House, 20 in the Senate, and a, and a governor with veto power. So I don't want to take that on here, I don't think we should, but I will say that 18 states have. So one of the main ones being Colorado, who I believe was the first state to legalize marijuana. I could be wrong, but I think they're one of the first. So, um, I think this is pretty extreme, but 12 of those 18 states have zero tolerance, literally zero nanograms per, per liter in your body, which I, I think is pretty extreme because it is fat soluble, and it could be in your system for, you know, maybe a long time after you did, whatever, right? So I don't know that much about it, that seems pretty extreme to me. There are two states that, that allow up to two nanograms per milliliter, and then there's four, Colorado being one of them, that allow up to five. And so I'm, I'm going to guess that those 18 states and all of their representatives have looked at science quite a bit. Again, though, I'm, I'm not too worried about that. What worries me is that we're larger than the state of West Virginia, we have no public transportation, barely any. I'm glad that the state legalized it in 2019 for towns like Sitka and Ketchikan, where you can, thousands and thousands and thousands of tourists get off of a boat and walk to the place right at the harbor, or just across the street, onsite consumption and walk back. They can't take it on the cruise ships, that's, that's a great, that's a great way to do it in those cities. In a place larger than the state of West Virginia, you know, I know, me weighing 225 pounds, my second beer, I'm right at the limit. You know, one beer, I'm way, way, way under .08. You know, take a breathalyzer, but we know these things because it's been around forever. We have rules that, you know, the Juno has determined it should be .08. We don't have anything like that for marijuana. And the idea that you could just go and have onsite consumption, I mean, my best friend owns Scorpion Grass. He thinks it's a terrible idea to have onsite consumption. They don't allow it. It's, you know, he doesn't, he, this is a dangerous idea. We have no way of knowing, we don't have a threshold, right? You, you should only be able to go to this or this. Until the state determines that, I don't think we should be able to do this. So that's where I stand on it. We got seven votes for a reason, that's where I'm at. However it falls, it falls, that's all I got.
Any other discussion by the Assembly? Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, thank you, I'll be brief. I think this is probably going to pass, but I am opposed to this, I think it's unnecessary. You know, law enforcement and prosecutors have been able to secure arrests and convictions on driving impaired while, while on cannabis for the last several decades. Pretty obvious that the legislature also thinks it's unnecessary as they have not addressed the issue even since we specifically asked them to with a resolution. There has not been any, any legislation put forward. To me, this just seems like a prohibition, you know, with, with the guise of public safety. And I, I don't think it's necessary. This is just big government telling, telling local businesses that they cannot serve a legal substance on their premises, and I am opposed.
Okay. Further comments by the Assembly? Okay. And so, is there any objection? And I think I heard some objection, so Madam Clerk, would you go ahead?
Yeah.
If I can have the members in the room, go ahead and vote. Assemblymember Hale?
No.
Assemblymember Nowers? There we go. It passed with Assemblymember Hale opposed.
Thank you.
Ordinance 23024, an ordinance extending the time limit for completion of the expiring projects to June 30th, 2024. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Okay, we have a staff report?
Through the, Mayor to the Assembly, Cheyenne Hindele, Planning Director. Before you is a list of projects that will expire at June 30, 2023. Many of these projects are in process or have other reasons for the need of extension. Many of these projects are in process or have other reasons for the need of extension. As part of this process, both the directors, the manager, myself have reviewed the list of projects. We did take a number of projects off the list, and the funding sources for most of these projects are either budget adoption with the annual budget, service area appropriations, and/or fund balance appropriations.
Questions, the staff? Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance 23-024. And we do not have a sign-up sheet, okay? Anyone in the audience is welcome to address the Assembly. Do we have anybody online, sir? We do not? One last chance, anybody present? Okay, so with that, I'll close the public hearing. Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance 23-024.
Any objection? Hearing none. Hearing no objection, the legislation passes.
Ordinance 23-026, and ordinance approving a reappropriation of $75,000 from the fiscal year 2023, Planning Division operating budget to fund the historic preservation plan Phase II and Board of Fisheries with accompanying Resolution 23-033, a resolution amending the scope of work and budget for the historic preservation plan Phase II and Board of Fisheries proposal. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Staff report?
Good evening, Mayor DeVries, members of the Assembly. My name's Kim Solian. I'm the Planning Services Manager, and this legislation is requesting to transfer $75,000 from our current operating budget into two project accounts that need additional resources, our historic preservation plan update, and the preparations to be involved with the Board of Fisheries meeting next spring. And that's all I have.
Okay. Questions, the staff? Okay, guess you did an okay job, lady. I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 23-026 and Resolution 23-033. Is there anyone that would, we do not have a sign-up sheet? No? Okay. Anyone that would like to address the Assembly on this ordinance or this resolution? Anybody online, sir? No? One last chance for anyone present? Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing. Let's see, Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance 23-026 and Resolution 23-033.
Any objection? Hearing none, the legislation passes.
Ordinance 23-028, and ordinance providing for the financing not to exceed $204,518 principal amount of special assessment internal service funds for the Forest Lake subdivision natural gas local improvement district number 619 and fixing details of said financing with accompanying ordinance 23-029, and ordinance confirming the assessment role for the Forest Lake subdivision natural gas lake local improvement district number 619 and establishing the method of terminating assessments and making refunds to property owners. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Staff report?
Through the Mayor to the Assembly, Cheyenne Hindle Finance Director. Before you is an ordinance to complete the LID process on the Forest Lake subdivision LID. This LID was approved by the Assembly in March of 2022. The work was completed over the construction season, and we are now at the point of setting the assessment role and setting the financing.
Questions? Okay. All right.
Can I take it up now or can I?
You can, you can take it up.
If you have a question, you can ask it now, staff.
You know, if it's just general discussion, you can wait till after the public hearing and we have the motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I guess that's it. Thank you. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing then on ordinance... Ordinance 23-028 and ordinance 23-029. Go ahead, sir.
Madam Mayor, Assemblymembers, I'm here. I came to this meeting today to inform you that I filed a criminal report to the Alaska State Troopers pertaining to your petition on LID 619. I have handed over evidence I believe will prove your petition is null and void. A trooper assured me he would forward the criminal report to the District Attorney's Office for investigation and prosecution. I believe I have witnesses and evidence to get this case prosecuted. Your petition, I believe, is unlawful in many ways under state and federal statutes. Also, I suggest you stop all proceedings in the billing and finalization of LID 619 until this matter is resolved. If you have questions on this issue, I suggest you contact the State Troopers and the District Attorney's Office. Now, if you persist in voting and finalizing LID 619, I request that Moki Twoz recuse himself from voting on the finalization of LID 619 and the billing because of his bias and prejudice statements made at the Assembly meeting on March 15, 2022. His statements are in the record for review. Borough Assembly members must be neutral and unbiased, and he was not on that date. Do the right thing and recuse yourself, sir.
And can I have you state your name for the record, sir?
My name is Douglas Hoover.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the Assembly on either one of these ordinances? Okay, do we have anybody online, sir? We do not? Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, then I will close the public hearing. And Assemblyperson Bynare, go ahead.
I move to adopt ordinance 23... I move to adopt ordinance 23-028 and ordinance 23-029, and I'd like to speak to it.
Go ahead.
So, there's, when we did the LID, there's some questions in there on, did they get the right number? And we went back and forth that night, and they had met, as far as we could tell, they met their quota, and that's why I voted for it. And then a couple of days later, it just kept on gnawing at me, and I wanted to resend it, but it had gone past the 24 hours. And basically, it boiled down to liberties, somebody being forced into something that they didn't want. And at some point, I would like to take and try to fix that on the LIDs. And then it's brought forth that 10 extra people have been added onto the gas line, but they were actually charged less than the people that are getting financed on this at like 9% interest or 9-point-something interest and stuff. I think I'd like to see it put on hold until we can get all our facts and actually come up with a good solution.
If the Assembly will give me the authorization, I'll go ahead and call staff back because staff may be able to answer some of your questions before. Okay? Go ahead.
Through the Assembly, through the Mayor to Assemblymember Bernaire. After the LID was approved, speaking to the 10 additional people, they were not added to this LID. They actually went to NSTAR and entered into an agreement with the NSTAR to extend the line, and they paid for the extension of the line from where it ended in this LID into their properties. So they could have come to the borough and created their own LID, and they made the decision to go directly to NSTAR and pay for it out of pocket themselves.
Because it was cheaper that way? They were charged a lineal foot.
They would have been, and we charge a linear footage, too. NSTAR supplies us with the construction cost. It's all in the tariff as to how much they charge. And then we have administrative fees on top of it because we have additional legal and administration to bill it and finance it over time. So that's why it's slightly more expensive than what NSTAR charges directly. The LID process provides a financing tool for the property owners to put in, whether it's paving or gas, as opposed to going to NSTAR directly and having to pay cash upfront.
Okay. It just seems...
Madam Mayor?
Oh, can you hold on just a minute, please, sir?
It seems like if those 10 that were added on, for a total, I think it was 33...
Had they been part of this originally?
Right.
The price would have been more because that extra lineal footage would have had to have been in the original LID cost.
Right, but it would have been divided up between 43 instead of 33.
Well, yes, but the additional cost that these people paid, these 10 additional people paid an additional cost to get the gas line run further.
So I've got...
The cost was not just what these 33 people paid. They paid to get the line to their areas.
To get to the end of it.
And then those additional 10 people had to pay to extend the line into their area. So had it all been one LID, you would have had a larger cost to distribute amongst the additional people, amongst all of the people.
It seems to me that these 33 people on the LID got it to point A. Now, these other 10 people picked up and got a cheaper rate, basically on a lineal feet because it was close to their property.
Well, the lineal, again, the lineal feet is stepped by tariff. We have no say in what that is. NSTAR goes to the utility board, and it's a tariff that's set. Now, had, like I said, had they all been included originally, but that's not what the taxpayer brought to the borough, they, the taxpayer that mapped this out mapped out the area that she wanted the LID to. And we have this happen in a lot of areas. Gas will be brought into an area, and then additional residents decide to either form their own LID or extend the line themselves, and they pay for just the extension of the line.
I just, I'd like to see it fair for everyone. I mean...
So when they, for the, maybe this will help, and I don't know, maybe muddy the water, but whatever. So the line where 619 started, and that was paid for by somebody previously, right?
Right, to where NSTAR hooked into the line and brought the line the rest of the way into this subdivision, somebody else had paid to get it to that point.
Right, so somebody, so previous to 619, somebody paid for that, then 619 came, and now 10 people have come. So really, the 10 people at the end took advantage of this, and 619 took advantage of the people that had been there before them. So I don't know if that muddies the water or something, but, you know.
I see.
Yeah, okay, all ready. And Deputy Mayor?
I just want to help clarify, if I can. There is one thing here that could possibly be somewhat confusing or unfair, but I've had miles and miles of gas lines ran over the years, and it's always the same price per square foot for everybody that whole year, whether you're a government agency or whether you're one of us, right? Everybody's going to pay the same. When you get a gas line from NSTAR, your average borough lot is 132-foot wide and 330-foot deep. They'll make you, even, say your house is in the middle of the lot, and you might only want to run it over here to the center and then up your driveway, they make you go to the edge of your property. And that's how it works. So, and if you own a large tract of land, that can be pretty expensive. And so the only way I would see that there was a market advantage or an unfair advantage to the folks that jumped in later would be, and this is a question I have for staff, I don't know, when we break this up, so if we're doing 33 lots and there's 4,500 lineal feet of gas line, do we actually charge this person whose lot is 130-foot wide, 130-foot wide, less than, say, this person who's 160-foot? Do we break that down and do we pass that along by lineal foot? You know, it doesn't change anything here, in my opinion. I'd just be curious more as a policy thing, if we take the widths of their lot into consideration because that is how NSTAR charges us. They charge by the lineal foot. So if you're one of the neighbors that were lucky enough to get gas-fed to your property and you say had a bigger lot, or not even bigger in square footage, wider, wider by lineal foot of road, you could be getting, per se, a better deal there than anyone else. But these 33 folks, I guarantee this LID went to the edge of the last lot that it fed, and then the other 10 would have picked up from there. So there's no advantage to those 10, in my opinion whatsoever. It may seem as though, and it might have been a little bit confusing, if they had jumped in on this originally, it would have went the farther distance, and then you would have divided it by 43, and it would have worked out probably relatively the same per lot. Again, I don't know if some people's lots are wider than another, and if we distinguish between those two as a policy here, but I don't see an advantage to the 10 at all personally. And then going back to this, I remember this one, you know, LIDs can become a little bit emotional for obvious reasons. The process in place for a reason, when a majority of the people would like to have it, then it happens. And I remember this one. It was a little bit contentious, you could say, but it did seem very fair to me, the process, the public process. And so by all means, I mean, I'm going to respect anything that the Assembly member in that district asks for. If Ron would like to delay this for two weeks so that we can ask more questions, get more answers, then I will support you in that wholeheartedly. You know, from my perspective, I think this has been a fair process. And I'm bummed to hear the interest rates that high, but that's nothing we can control. I do wish it was substantially lower, but other than that, you know, I would say this has been a fair shake. But again, like I said, out of respect for Mr. Bernaire, if you would like to extend this for a meeting or two, I'm all for that. My understanding, though, this work's already been done, is it not? We're just talking about financing now.
Through the, Mayor to Assemblymember Hale, the work has been done, and the way the LID works at the borough is, once we get the total cost, we allocate it equally amongst all property owners in the area. We don't look at the width of their lots.
And I was 99% sure it had been. I just wanted to clarify that for anybody up here that may be confused. This work is done and behind us?
Yes, and we do need to pay NSTAR.
Time to pay the bill. So anyway, that's all I got. Thank you.
Assemblyperson Hale, did you have a comment, sir? Thank you for waiting.
Yeah, you've had a quick clarification through the Mayor to Director Hindle. So if I understand correctly, you're saying that the difference in price is the difference between paying out of pocket and getting financed.
Through the Mayor to Assemblymember Hale, yes, that is correct.
Yeah, and that's the way it always is when you get financed, and it's more expensive. So, thank you.
Okay, further discussion, questions?
I did be helpful to have her describe the multi-stage process here.
Sure, yeah.
If I may ask you to, describe just the process of getting here. Like, when you just said the work is done, I mean, I don't want people in the public to think, oh, staff just went out and created this LID, and all of a sudden, the work's done, and now we're, we've got the Assembly with no option here. Like, this is, and I think it may be good for some of the newer members just to describe real quick what the stages are that get us to this point. This is certifying the role.
Through the Mayor to the Assembly. So when an LID starts, the borough does not initiate an LID. A property owner in that subdivision or area comes in, they sit down with staff, they map out the area that they want to include in the LID, which means usually they have talked to their neighbors and they know who all wants to be involved. They come in, they get their official map, they get a list of property owners that correspond to the parcels on the map that they want to include, and then they have to, they have the time to do a petition. The petition has to have more than 50%, as a rule, sit now, more than 50% of the property owners sign it. Once we get petitions back with more than 50% of the property owners signing onto petition, it goes to the clerk's office for certification. We go to NSTAR. In the case of a gas LID, they give us a cost to do the construction. Then we bring forward legislation to the Assembly to create the LID. Now, part of that, prior to bringing forward that legislation, we also send out a ballot... also send out a ballot to every person and every property owner in the LID, and they have to vote, more than fifty percent have to vote yes, to get that LID passed. If they vote no, or if they fail to return their ballot, I mean, failure to return a ballot is treated as if it's a no ballot. So, the only way an LID passes is if more than fifty percent actually vote yes. At that point, it comes to the assembly. In the meetings, if the ballot, because the balloting is being done during the introduction page, phase of the introduction to the legislation, because we have a thirty-day window. If the balloting comes back and we have less than fifty percent, we get up here and we recommend to you to fail the LID because the property owners didn't want it. If it comes in with more than fifty percent of the ballots as yes, then we recommend it to move forward. Once we get approval to create the LID, then we contact NSTAR and let them know they can proceed with the work. That's what's happened in this case. The LID was approved, NSTAR went ahead and put in the gas lines. And NSTAR always starts from wherever their last connection is. So they start from there and they move the line forward. Once the work is done, NSTAR notifies us that the work is done. We again, prepare legislation. We again, notify all the property owners that we're bringing forth the legislation to set the assessment role and to finance the project. Financing for the project is over ten years, two payments annually of principal and interest. They can pay, they have the opportunity with, before, when the first bill goes out, they can pay a hundred percent with no interest within, I don't remember exact time dates, but they have an opportunity to pay a hundred percent of it, or they can make the individual semi-annual payments over the next ten years. And they can pay it off at any time. They don't have to pay for the full ten years, just like most debts, you can pay it off in full at any time.
Just curiosity-
Madam Mayor? Oh, just a minute, Deputy Mayor, and then Stephanie, and then Minty.
I surely hope this would never happen, but have we, have we already paid NSTAR? Or are they waiting for the borough to write them a check still?
They're paid, yes.
So if-
So the borough's carrying the weight of it right now.
Right, that's kind of what I assumed. So, because NSTAR's not going to wait for six months or whatever to get paid. So, it, I just want to say, we're a year into this and if, and I'm all for extending it if it, if it helps us reach some clarity, but I think it would be a very bad precedent to set if we ever decided to get to this point in the process and not allow our staff to set up the financing plan. I think we'd be stuck holding the bag in that case. I don't really know, I don't want to find out, but that would be catastrophic, in my opinion. So, that's all I got.
Okay.
Question, during that ten years of the property sold, and we have it five years in, the remaining still there, does that just bill carries over at the closing? Does it need to be paid in full?
Through the mayor to Assemblymember Fahnoff, it depends on what the mortgage company wants debt. At closing, some of them pay off in full, and, or, there is a history that the LID goes to the new owners. It just depends on how it's handled at closing.
Assemblyperson Nowers, did you have a comment, ma'am?
I did. I appreciate the Assemblymember Berniers, you know, wanting to make sure this is all straight, and I'll respect what he wants to do on this. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things with the finance director. The, if fifty-one percent of the people approve this, even if forty-nine percent voted no, those, those no votes, they pay the same price that the fifty-one percent who voted that they wanted this. So if they were in the minority and they didn't want this, they got to pay the bill, whether they want that natural gas or not.
Through the mayor to Assemblymember Nowers, yes, in the case of this LID, because it was a continuous LID and all the properties were specified as part of it, everybody shares in the cost of it. If this had been brought forward as a non-contiguous LID, where they picked and chose which lots were going to be in it, then only those lots that would have been on the petition, and they have to have a hundred percent approval at balloting to carry one of those forward. You will be seeing a couple of those come forward in the future for creation, non-contiguous. But like I said, those require a hundred percent approval from the property owners that want to be in it. So, again, in the process, the petitioner that comes in and does the first map has the opportunity to let us know what kind of LID they are forming, whether it's contiguous or non-contiguous.
Right, and I appreciate that. And something that I have not appreciated is ever making somebody pay for a service they don't want. And I, I know we've had a higher bar in the past for the percentage that had to approve this, which is something I, I supported in order for, you know, the folks that don't want it to have to pay. I just wanted to mention that, that this was only recently changed to fifty percent. I think two years ago, we lowered that to fifty percent. And I'm just trying to remember, if you can help me, was the bar in the past, it required sixty-five percent of the contiguous lots approval, or was it seventy percent?
Through the mayor to Assemblymember Nowers, the previous percentage was seventy percent. However, long history at the borough, LID approval percentages go up and down. They have been as high as seventy-five percent. They're always at least fifty percent, but what we find is depending on the well of the assembly, it determines whether the percentage required for approval is higher or lower. And you're right, about two years ago, they lowered the percentage down from seventy percent to fifty percent.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate that the folks who went through this process, they did meet the threshold that it's currently set at fifty percent. And like I said, I'll go with the wishes of the assembly member representing this area, if he wishes another two weeks to look at this, or if we just go ahead and send this through tonight.
Excuse me, further discussion? Go ahead, Assemblyperson McKee.
This kind of reminds me of the thing on Beverly Lake when they did what they were supposed to do and met the numbers and all that kind of thing. And then we decided that that wasn't good enough. And I seem to remember it being said that, well, we need to do it like we do the LIDs where it was sixty percent or something like that, which I thought was great. I didn't agree with applying it retroactively, but I thought that that was, like, that that was a bar for LIDs. And then, but it's not? So it's fifty?
Through the mayor to Assemblymember McKee, in code, the bar is fifty percent, more than fifty percent, so fifty-one percent. And that was decided, like I said, that was lowered two years ago from seventy percent.
How do we get it upped?
We would, we would have to bring an amendment to code to raise it.
Yeah, because that's awfully contentious. And you've got, you know, you've got sixty percent saying it, you're kind of, you're kind of stuck with that. But fifty percent, that was why the Beverly Lake thing was such a monumental, I don't know what you would call it, screw-up. I won't even call it that, but the people called it that. So-
Yeah, and in this instance, like I said, the percentage is set in code. So we follow what is set in code.
Okay. One final comment. I was one of the people who was saying, well, if it's only fifty percent and the people who don't want it shouldn't have to do it. But I, I didn't win that round, so something needs to be done about percentages, I'm thinking. Thank you.
Further discussion by assembly members? Is there any objection to the legislation passing? Okay, we have objection. Okay, if I can get the members in the room to go ahead and vote.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, who, it's, can I ask who is objecting?
It was Assemblymember Bernier.
Okay, thank you.
If I can get the members in the room to continue to vote, please.
And I'm sorry to clarify, are we voting to pass this or not?
Yes.
Or are we voting whether to, oh, okay.
We are voting on the main motion.
There was no amendments.
Thank you.
Assemblymember Nowers.
Yes.
Assemblymember Hale.
Yes.
Passed with, failed with Assemblymember Yunt in favor and Assemblymember Nowers and Hale. Bear with me. The legislation failed.
Forty-three. So now the borough's paying for the LID. Any reconsiderations?
I can't reconsider. I'm not allowed. I voted yes. I don't know if anybody, yeah.
Well, if you voted no, then you can reconsider because you're in the majority.
Yes.
Oh, you voted yes.
Could we, can we please have staff explain what happened with the no vote on this in terms of the financial viability to the borough?
Well, we've already, my understanding, we've already paid NSTAR, and so with this failing, then there's no, we don't have any way to collect from the people that have the service. And so borough taxpayers all over the borough are responsible for it now. Okay.
I'll reconsider.
Okay.
Yeah.
To the assembly members, Assemblymember Two has moved to reconsider the motion. Is there discussion?
Discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we need to have an edes? Do we?
I'd like to ask for a ten-minute edes, or five at least.
How about recess?
Recession, yeah. We're not in June, I'm sorry.
Okay, so let's come back at seven forty-five. How about that?
Sheila, the last bellyache rescue, we spoke on the phone. So, I have a lot of stuff right now, but I didn't realize how long this is going to be.
One little thing.
Yeah. But I realized how this compared to this. I think I needed to be distant.
It's, like I said, I think-
What kind of motivation do you want when I come to this?
I would just, almost like, almost your vision, but I would then, yeah.
Yeah.
Funded, you know, you have to make it clear that you're not asking for money, you're just, also where you can do this and you-
Do you think I should have that parcel taken down already? Because it's just a great, you know, available, it's massive, but maybe just applying to it.
No, there's, there is, several lots, but my, I do think, you spoke to me, it's very unreasonable. I would support because that's, that's a lot of, like, we have, we have, we're building schools, exactly, we have five students, you know. So, I would, I would just say it's going to have a little challenge, like, there's several acres of this, but obviously if it's further remote, then probably, but the more sort of remote it is, the harder it is for you to have this to be used as a park, there's not many people to deal with. I would wait for it, so, you know, maybe we might structure it more with the, you know, with the, so it's still a borough, but it gives you rights to do that. And if it works, it works, and if it doesn't, because who knows, you're not here anymore. One of them, them at least, that man doesn't just sit there and hold that in the debate of the stage. So I think it might, might be more of a, but that's not, especially as, I would say, if you prepare them, you may say, hey, this is the vision that I think I would need for it, this is what we're willing to do, at least we'll get here, and then as we go.
When's the next meeting when I can be better prepared?
Okay. Sonia, when is the, our next meeting? Okay. Sonia, when is the, our next meeting?
Audience. Thank you, audience, for your indulgence. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting back to order. And I believe we're at the point, buh 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 buh, come on, guys. Hey! Boy, we got a rowdy brunch tonight.
Mayor, can I point out that that was the attorney? He talks too much.
Do you want, do you want to revoke his trip this weekend? He can't go to Washington D.C.? He has to stay home? Yes, I think we're reconsideration, but you go ahead and.
Yes.
Verify for me, please.
Assemblymember two has reconsidered the main motion. And what this will do, if it passes, if reconsideration passes, we'll be right back on the main motion again for the two ordinances, like we had never taken the original vote. You would be voting again on the main motion. So if you vote yes on reconsideration, we'll be voting on that ordinance again. If you vote no, we will not. That is where we are at.
Okay, thank you. All righty, so the main, the reconsideration has been made and Cook is going to ask for your vote here in a minute.
You can ask if there's any objection.
Okay, is there any objection to the reconsideration? Okay, thank you. So now before us again is ordinance twenty-three dash zero-two-eight and ordinance twenty-three dash zero-two-nine. Is there further discussion, amendments, or are you ready to vote? Is there any objection to the legislation passing?
We are on the main motion for ordinance twenty-three zero-two-eight and twenty-three zero-two-nine. That is what the Assembly is voting on right now.
I just have to tell you, I misunderstood. I thought when we did reconsideration, we were going to vote again.
There was no objection to the reconsideration passing, so we didn't vote on that because there, there was no objection.
So there's no time extension or anything like that? It's just like, here we are again?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any objection on the main motion or are we going on?
Any objection on the main motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three dash zero-two-eight and twenty-three dash zero-two-nine?
You're going to object? Okay. Okay, if I can get the members in the room to go ahead and vote. Assemblymember Hale.
Yes.
Assemblymember Nowers.
Yes.
It passed with Assemblymember McKee and Bernier opposed.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Ordinance twenty-three zero-three-one and ordinance extending the date of completion for the Boroughwide Comprehensive Plan Update, Community Comprehensive Plan Update, Historic Preservation Plan, Stormwater Management Plan, Transportation Planning, and Public Outreach Education and Incentives to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six with accompanying resolution twenty-three zero-three-nine, a resolution amending the scope of work and budget for the UMed District project and the transportation planning project, and amending the scope of work and title for the Air Quality Public Outreach Education Incentives sub-project. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, Professor Starr, three.
Okay, staff?
Hello, again, Kim Sillian, Planning Services Manager. The Planning Division has eight different project accounts of, of projects that we're working on right now and five of them are set to expire on June thirtieth. And so because these are all active projects, we're actively working on the comp plan, the historic preservation plan, transportation planning, the stormwater management program. We're asking to extend these project accounts until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. We also have two project accounts that we aren't utilizing and we do need additional funds in other project accounts. And so we're asking to, to re-scope the UMed District funding into our transportation planning project account. And we're asking to re-scope the air quality district outreach and education funding into general public involvement, outreach and education. Because the borough, right now, we have automated our air quality alert system so that if there is poor air quality in the burt, the, the butte, and we need to notify residents that there is a burn ban in effect because of air quality, our website does the automated alert and sends out the information, so we don't need additional funding to do that education. But all of our plans involve public outreach and education and so adding additional funds to that account would be helpful. The other reason why we want to re-scope the UMed District funding is because our sub-area solutions project, which is a project that we're working on right now, is looking at the UMed District and going to be proposing some recommendations that we'll present to the Assembly. So we don't actually need that funding in that project account. But because we have some questions related to public transit, additional funding in our transportation project account would be helpful.
Further questions to staff? Okay, thank you. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance twenty-three dash zero-three-one and resolution twenty-three dash zero-three-nine. No sign-up sheet, okay. Does anyone like to testify on either this ordinance or resolution? Do we have anybody online, sir? We do not? One last chance for anybody local? No? Okay. So I'll close the public hearing and Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance twenty-three zero-three-one and accompanying resolution twenty-three zero-three-nine.
Okay, discussion? Any objection from the Assembly to passing? Okay, hearing no objection, the legislation passes. Don't we have this one?
Oh, sorry. That was all me. Ordinance twenty-three zero-three-two and ordinance accepting and appropriating an additional five thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents from the Alaska State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management Grant Program for training with accompanying resolution twenty-three zero-four-two, a resolution approving the revised scope of work and budget for the Alaska State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management Grant for training.
Okay, staff, go ahead.
Through the mayor to the Assembly, Shai Hidal Finance Director, before you, is a grant acceptance and appropriation. It also extends the date of completion until July thirty-first for this training money for our emergency management program.
Questions to staff? Okay, thank you. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance twenty-three dash zero-three-one and resolution twenty-three dash zero-three-nine. No sign-up sheet, okay. Anyone like to testify to the Assembly on either this ordinance or resolution? No? Do we have anybody online, sir? We do not? So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance twenty-three dash zero-three-two and resolution twenty-three zero-four-two.
Hmm? Four-two? I thought it was three.
She didn't switch it over. We are on the next one.
I'm sorry.
Apparently that was Sonia and I.
Oh, okay, all righty. So. Okay, so we have the main motion to approve ordinance twenty-three dash zero-three-two and resolution twenty-three dash zero-four-two. Discussion. Any objection to the legislation passing? Okay, legislation passes. Okay, so next item, we are to audience participation and we have some people. We have Douglas Hoover, but I think he was here and left. Let's, if he came back or if he comes back in, somebody yell for me, okay. Georgia Holton?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Assembly. As a property owner, directly to the north of section twenty-nine parcel C zero-zero-seven, I oppose the Long Lake Road Timber Harvest in resolution twenty-three dash zero-four-one. The announcement for this timber harvest has been vague at best and multiple neighbors have received conflicting answers from the borough about the specifics of this proposal. There's no established plan to ensure there will be no clearcutting. There's conflicting information on wildfire mitigation. There's concern about the damage any longer operation would do to the surrounding area. I visited the Yoder Road Harvest Site this past weekend and if the Long Lake Road Harvest is planned the same way, it will be akin to clearcutting. In addition, the proposed hundred-foot buffer along private property lines does not seem sufficient. And it, as someone whose property has experienced vandalism in the past, the clearcutting and minimal buffer will make our property easily visible and accessible and open to increased vandalism. The borough has stated that a certain amount of trees per acre will be retained to enhance the aesthetic quality of the area and improve potential access. Yet there are no specifics on exactly how many trees per acre and again, improving potential access to private property should give pause for concern. Any mention of fire or fire danger mitigation by the borough doesn't seem supported. There's little to no dead or beetle-kill spruce in the area. Further, one of the responses from the borough is that the management plan will entail preserving all live spruce within the proposed harvest boundary, house preserving a known fire hazard type of tree mitigating the threat of wildfire danger. The Borough's twenty-twenty-one Community Wildfire Protection Plan says that fire or fuel reduction involves the cutting and chipping of hazardous forest fuels, typically dense black and white spruce stands and/or trees killed by insects, disease, and fire. It goes on to say that cutting prescriptions consist of fully cleared fire breaks or partial cuts that leave the hardwood component of the forest standing. This resolution is opposite what the CWPP states. Land off the Long Lake Road is predominantly wetlands, so it seems unlikely roads should be created off Long Lake Road. If the intent is to use what the borough calls West Abbey Road, otherwise known as Honey Lynn Road, otherwise known as an access road for the public to Honeybee and Lynn Lakes off the Long Lake Road, then logging trucks will damage an already fragile access road to private properties in the public landing area with currently no plan in place to improve the road. While I'm not opposed to partial cutting to limit the threat of wildfire, I believe that the proposed timber harvesting in this resolution for this area is merely for monetary gain of a private company and will cause more harm than good. It is my hope that the borough does not authorize any solicitation for bids for an over-the-counter timber harvest as it is not in the best interest of any landowners in and around the project area. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Tim Potter?
Used to be a lot lower. My name is Tim Potter. I reside in Anchorage, but I have recreational property at the north end of Gene Lake, which is just a little north of Honeybee Lake. I was contacted by a friend concerning the timber permit that was proposed to be done over the counter. And my background, I was put on the bulldozer by a developer when I was fifteen years old. That was a long time ago. And he said, kid, take that bulldozer over to that acre property and you push dirt until you're good. And when you get good, I'll pay it. And I got good real fast. And I worked for that developer in Western Washington where I grew up until 1980, when I applied to be the Planning Director of Gig Harbor, Washington. And shortly after that, I was contacted by Dowell Engineers, good firm, and was asked to come up and become their Planning Director. My wife and I thought that would be a great adventure. We'd both wanted to come to Alaska, so we hopped in my '78 Subaru wagon, two ocean kayaks on top, and came up the road. And the next morning after we arrived, flew out to Dillonham. That was our introduction to Alaska. It was going to be a two-to-three-year experiment and adventure. It's been a little over 42 years now. My background is environmental analysis and development and planning, urban and regional planning. I've done development work. I have about 52 years of experience. I was at Dowell Engineers for 40 years before I retired a little over a year ago. And I was asked by my friend to take a look at the proposal. And I said, well, what's the proposal? It's a timber permit to cut timber. Why? How's it going to be done? What are the operation plans? How is the area going to be protected? What about drainage? There's steep hillsides on Abbey Hill, and the area's open for erosion, and there's just a lot of factors that go into it. Even holding 100-foot buffer, you can expect about 20% of that tree cover to fall during any windstorms. The aesthetics are terrible when you go to clearcut. Greg Jones wrote a great paper and report concerning the permit. I don't know if you've seen it or had a chance to read it, but it goes into great detail on a variety of issues. And one of the biggest issues I have, besides the environmental component and impact on the direct neighbors, is that if the borough's been attempting to sell these parcels, and they haven't sold, the value is going to be diminished significantly by semi-controlled or uncontrolled permitted cutting. And depending on the state that property's left in, will diminish the value of the parcel for any sale for the next 20-plus years, because this area is vegetated, and that's part of why people buy the property for recreational use.
Can I have you wrap it up, sir, please? Can I have you wrap it up, please?
The tax implications are that not only you're going to diminish the value of the property itself for sale value, but you'll impact, in a big way, the surrounding properties on Honeybee Lake and Lynn Lake. And they will come in and appeal their taxes.
Sir, I need you to wrap it up. You're well past your time.
And you'll lose money. And I don't understand why no one's focusing on the bigger picture than trying to issue a permit to cut trees on a parcel that's not great for cutting trees, that'll have an environmental impact and a value impact. That's it. Open for questions.
Thank you. Barbara Luce? There she comes. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor DeVries, Manager Brown, and members of the Assembly. My name's Barbara Loshus. I'm a resident of Willow. I oppose this proposed timber sale. We learned about the sale through the grapevine. We never were notified by mail or email about this. A neighbor called up and said, hey, did you know what they're going to do right next to you? The timber sale land borders our property. The sale land that you're talking about is 279 acres and talking about 137 acres being forested for firewood. Some of the miscommunication, what is particularly upsetting is the miscommunication with people in the borough at the Land Management Division. There's lack of, over the last, I'd say, month or so, there's been a lack of detail regarding the sale, what the intention was, what the timing was, who was going to do the permits, who was paying for permits, who is going to pay for modifications to Long Lake Road or possibly Abbey Road? Who is going to handle and oversee this project? Who is going to handle oil spill? Who is going to deal with the wetlands issues if and when there will be some? You're talking about disrupting a stable rural neighborhood. Many people in the neighborhood live off the grid and choose to live far out in Willow because their properties are a little larger, and they do deal with the far commute into Wasilla and Anchorage. But the choice to have that quality of life is the choice why people live out there. You're disrupting the harmonious ecosystem of flora and fauna. You're contributing to fire hazard. You're not preventing fire hazard. The reasoning behind cutting these, this acreage was beetle kill, was birch stocking, was preventing the spread of wildfires. As a survivor of the Sakai Fire and the Deshka Landing Fire, deciduous trees don't necessarily promote and increase hazard. They sometimes deter it. That is the science. In speaking to people at the Land Management Division of the borough, we learned about the fact that it was already chosen that Poppert Milling was to be the person who would be felling the trees and getting the contract. What's interesting about the Poppert decision was a gentleman in our neighborhood who's not here today because of family emergency had a discussion with Poppert. What did Mr. Poppert say? Oh, it'll be done in the winter, and depending on how high the snow is at the time, we'll leave the stumps. We're not taking any birch, any black spruce. We're taking the birch. We're taking the birch that are five inches or greater, and we're leaving all the slash. There's a lot of conflicting information from what your people at the borough are telling the public or not telling the public. You're taking us for stupid, and we're not in Willow stupid by any means, and we find it an abomination that this is continuing to the level that's continuing it, where you're taking bids when even the Waco Community Center sent you a letter. You should have all of the letters that we've written to you, and I hope that you have read them, because the community does not support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Robert Hancock?
Good evening. I'm also a property owner in the area. I've got about a 1,400-foot common border with this borough land, and the access that they want to use for hauling all the wood out of there, which is West Abbey Lane, and I've got about 1,400 feet of that through my property as well. So that's my vested interest in this. I'm sure you guys know Mr. Kruger. He's the one that's organized this sale. I kind of see it's humorous to me to see that he's requesting to solicit bids, but from my understanding, it's already been given to Poppert through the back door. And when this was presented to the community, they were talking about birch stocking, which is helping the health of the forest by thinning certain trees and removing beetle kill. Well, there is no beetle kill there. The birch is 99% of our wood in this area. There is no birch, and there's, the birch that there is, the spruce that's there is not beetle kill. It's alive. So the idea that he's going to save us from a forest fire is BS by limiting the dead wood. The idea that Poppert's going to come in, take all the birch over five inch, and he was, that's been mentioned, and take everything but a 100-foot border on private lands and 15 trees per acre, that's not birch stocking. That's as close to a clearcut as you can get. And take a look at Yoder Hill, and you can see what that 15 trees per acre looks like. It's terrible. So, I mean, that's how I'm, what my opinion on this, you know? And the fire aspect of it, Poppert's already said he's going to leave all the brush. So what happens when you have all this open land in the direct sun and all these brush piles? You've created a fire hazard, not prevented one. So the idea that you're helping the neighborhood just isn't true. And the other aspect of this is this, the borough lands, 279 acres, of which only 127 of them are not considered wetland. So you're over 50% wetland. And they, I'm sure you've got this map, they've drawn all kinds of little fancy borders of what this wetland is. And my question is, who is, what surveyor's going to come and plot this wetland and put the 100-foot barrier there? I mean, Mr. Kruger told us that they're estimating, one more minute.
Sure.
That there's, that their profit from this to the borough is $5 a cord, and they're not paying for the firewood. They're only paying for the wood that can be processed into lumber. They've estimated that at 1,000 to 1,500 quarts. So that's $5,000 to $7,500 the borough's going to make on that timber sale. Well, I know because I've surveyed my property, to have a surveyor come in and lay out this wetlands and lay out this easement that joins my property that's not cleared, it's going to cost you more than you're going to gain. I don't work in the winter, and trust me, I'll be there to make sure if this goes through, that all this is, all their eyes are dotted and their t's are crossed. And this is going to end up costing the borough in legal issues, because there's a lot of people there that are going to fight this tooth and nail. Thank you.
Sir, I don't know. I said your name for the record, but I don't know who you did, so do you mind saying your name for the record?
Robert Hancock?
Thank you. Okay, Jackie?
Madam Mayor and Assembly, my name is Jackie Ivey. Go forth. I want you to know that I'm handing out a two-part handout tonight. The first four pages are to inform you that the LGBTQ and Pride community has now been infiltrated and oversees pedophilia. They call themselves MAPS. It's called a minor attracted person. That is what is underneath the LGBTQ and the Pride. Now, I am the author of several books. I have a daughter who has a master's degree in library science. I knew she would do that because she catalogued all my books in my house back when she was in grade school. I have nothing against libraries. I absolutely love them. I've actually won 30 writing awards. I want you to know one more thing about me. If I see a child under attack, if it's a bear, a moose, a pedophile, a person distributing porn, I'm going to do something about it. I'm going to mitigate the hazard. I am not going to try and find procedures and policies to do it. Now, that should explain my recent activities regarding what's been happening. But I have to tell you, I have never had my comprehension of English language challenged or my intelligence, as I have in the last few days. I happen to have the book right here. It started in the Palmer Police Department when I first went down there to complain about this book being in Palmer. And I talked to a librarian who told me that it isn't a children's book, it's young adult, YA. Young adult is 14. I don't have any comprehension problem with that. That's still a child. Then I went over here, and I talked to you about it. And we had a little conversation out in the foyer with a young gentleman who told me I don't understand what sexual education it is, and I obviously needed to clutch my pearls. And then there's your guy. After I spoke last time, I got to talk with Hugh Leslie. Mr. Leslie told me, when I told him that this book is full of pornography and obscenity, that that was my interpretation. My interpretation. And when I told him it was against the law, and it was obvious, he told me that that was up to law enforcement and the courts, not me. I got news for you. I have the chapters listed for you in this book. Did you see them? Did you see the chapters? It's page six. What does it say? It says, "Kinks, fantasies, and porn." What is 16? Masturbation. Does anybody have a problem with the word masturbation? Because the very next page has the law, 11.61.128, 2C. It is against the law to distribute to anyone under 16 anything about masturbation. It's in English. And in case the definition of English has changed of the word, I went and printed it out. It means exactly what it used to. I don't understand why these people think I have a comprehension problem, because I don't. And I will continue. This book is still in Willow, but it got pulled from Palmer. So there must be a reason it got pulled from Palmer, because maybe they didn't want me to turn them in for a Class C felony. Thank you.
Greg Jones?
Greg Jones.
Oh, is he? Do we have somebody online?
If there's a Greg Jones online, you need to press star three if you want to participate in audience participation.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, this is, thank you. My name's Greg Jones, and I would be there tonight if I hadn't had an emergency in our family. I live in Willow. I'm speaking to ask you to cancel the Long Lake Road Timber Sale. You should have received a copy of a letter that I sent to the borough with my concerns about the sale. I won't repeat all of that. But there are no shortage of reasons why the public should be concerned about this proposed sale. I'll touch three of them. First of all, this area, this is not the highest and best use for this land. If it proceeds, the public is going to be robbed of the value of this land as well as the damage it's done to the surrounding properties. The land is ideally suited for residential and recreational uses. Logging does nothing to add value and will diminish the value for many years to come. Second, the sale lies in the face of your established community plan and your own timber harvest plan and schedule. The borough did a very good detailed five-year timber sale plan. You're now two years into that plan. Staff has all of a sudden, without warning, decided to ignore the plan and promote a 280-acre commercial harvest in the middle of Willow on land that wasn't in the plan, on a piece of property that's much larger than the properties that are in the plan, with no explanation, just let's go out of the plan. Finally, you can tell the surrounding cabin and homeowners don't have any information about what's going to happen. I've talked to the borough staff at length about it, and I met with David Popper, the presumptive logger. I get widely conflicting stories from each of them on how the logging project would be conducted. The reason for the different stories is the staff has not worked out the details. They have not walked the site. They have not seen the access. They don't know what type of trees or how many trees are out there, and they don't plan to learn any of this until the sale is approved, and then they'll go do the work. This is very similar to the approach that Nancy Pelosi took with the U.S. House of Representatives on Obamacare. You have to read it, and you have to vote for it in order to find out what's in it. I've been responsible for managing land and resources in Alaska for over 40 years as Executive Director of the Trust's Land Office and later CEO of the Mental Health Trust and as Vice President of the Coconut Region. I have never seen an approach to managing a public access that is so negligent. So please answer this question for all of us. For what public purpose was this unsolicited timber sale proposed in the heart of Willow? Who proposed the sale? Staff has been unable to give us an answer to that. So here's what I suggest. Cancel the sale. Set up a process to talk to the Willow area community. There are two hundred more acres of borough land that's adjacent to this two-hundred-and-eighty acres. Make it four-hundred-and-eighty acres. Talk to the community. In addition to the local citizens, bring in the public agencies who have concerns about the site. You've gotten emails and letters from the Corps of Engineers. Bring them into it. DNR, ADF&amp;G, state parks. Build a consensus on the long-term use of this public asset. Then if portions of it need to be logged to help reach the goals that are set by the community. So be it. Log the land. Don't just go into a community like Willow, chop down a bunch of trees and say, okay, did that. Thank you. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Well, Mr. Jones, I don't know how you accomplished this, but you're online and also signed in. So whoever signed you in, I would ask you not to do that again. No. This, we, we give ample opportunity for people online as well as here to testify. So I prefer somebody doesn't forge somebody else's name. Thank you. Okay, Mike, is it you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mike Fromm. I speak against the timber sale resolution. I live on Honeybee Lake. The proposed timber, timber sale property is the primary view out my front window. Your staff admits to never having set foot on this property. You have no idea about the timber, the topography, the wetlands, the access challenges, or the impacts on nearby property owners. Yet you intend to conduct this sale before establishing any restrictions and limitations that potential bidders will have to abide by. You've received a considerable number of public comments on this proposal, the vast majority of which are opposed, including from the Willow area community organization, which passed a unanimous resolution strongly opposing this sale. By now, it should be intuitively, intuitively obvious that the people most affected by this resolution do not want you to proceed. This assembly needs to act in the best interest of the communities you serve. This resolution needs to die right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone that didn't sign up that would like to testify? Okay, come on forth. It can be on any subject. Doesn't have to be on a subject that's on the agenda, anything that you would like to discuss.
Good evening. Andrew Traxler. I wanted to testify on the Long Lake Road Timber Sale. So our forest is having an issue of being past maturity. We have an infestation in our birch trees, whether it be a fungus or a leaf-cut beetle. We also have a beetle-kill spruce problem. Our borough lands are like a garden. We can allow our forest to manage itself through death, disease, or fire. Or we can harvest our lands and get a dollar value of it, and that causes reforestation to happen sooner. Currently, we do not harvest to our regeneration capability. I've reviewed this timber sale and the access to the highway system. And this would be a very optimal place for timber sale, very low impact to the neighborhood as far as the road use. You have direct access to the park's highway, making log traffic safe for travel. You have the buffer to the surrounding properties. I read all the correspondence from property owners and their concerns, and I read all the responses from your Matsu Borough Forester, who is hired to manage our lands. Everything is in line for the best that you could ever expect for there to be a timber salvage harvest. And I do own a sawmill business. I have no interest in this specific harvest. But I will tell you, every tree that's ever been across my sawmill has protested the same way. Unfortunately, that is the world we live in. All of us have wood homes. All of us use toilet paper. And unfortunately, there's gonna be a tree cut to provide your homes, to provide your tables, to provide what I'm standing at. And unfortunately, where we harvest, people do not prefer that to happen. But unfortunately, that's borough land, and we have a responsibility to manage our resource, and our forester says that it's time to harvest it. So I recommend approval of this timber harvest. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else, I think, wanted to?
Counsel, my name is Caleb Piszkowski. I'm a Willow resident, and I oppose the Willow Timber Harvest Sale. This is three hundred acres of prime real estate in the heart of Willow. I see this being developed into beautiful residential, beautiful recreational-type property. That's not gonna be the case if it's clear-cut, everything over four inches. This is old-growth harvest woodlands, which means it's gonna end up being a clear cut. I'd like to talk about a few key points without emotion. So one, which was, this was not initiated on the five-year harvest sale. It's not included in it. Two, the borough has recognized that there was notification issue to adjacent property owners, because none of us or very few of us received notification that this harvest was gonna take place. Parcels identified were not previously up for over-the-counter sale, like the council had expressed that they were, and they didn't sell. So now they're trying to reduce and change the property to make it more valuable for, or equitable for a sale. Birch stocking and beetle kill mitigation. There is no interest in any of the spruce on the properties, so. And then, of course, you guys know that the Willow Community Council completely disproves of this use of the land, so. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the assembly on anything? Any item? Yes, come forth.
Well, good evening to you guys. My name's Joseph Pereira. I just wanted to update you guys. I was here a couple months ago talking about the Palmer Family Park. And just so the, the rest of the folks maybe know, it's gonna be the first and only fully-inclusive, all-accessible park in the state of Alaska. So we're excited about that. A few things. Nine thousand, approximately nine thousand square feet footprint for it. Have a pavilion barbecue, restrooms that'll be fully functional for all disability needs. It's going, the equipment is going to be shipped May thirtieth, all-American-made equipment and foundation and everything, so I was pretty excited about that. It should arrive somewhere around mid-June is when all the equipment is coming in. And we're actually gonna be doing what's called a community build. So a lot of folks within the community are gonna be a part of helping actually put the park together. We already have Palmer High School football team committed to coming and being a part of that, so we're excited. We have a placeholder logo right now for the park, but we've actually sent a request to all the high school art departments to design the official logo for the park, because we really do want it to be a community event. And so that should be coming out pretty soon. Hopefully, mid-July is when the grand opening will be happening. So we invite you guys all to be a part of that. We currently have received half a million dollars. It's about eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars to end up building it, because we keep adding stuff like the restroom and stuff like that. So we're about three hundred and eighty dollars, or three hundred and eighty thousand dollars remaining still. We have grants that are out, you know, waiting for, for those hopefully all to come in. May fourth, we're gonna have kind of a stakeholders luncheon over at Colony Inn. Limited spacing, but if anybody's interested in wanting to come to that, just let me know. We'd love to have you guys there to be able to, you know, get to hear what it's all about there. So that's Thursday, May fourth, from twelve to one o'clock. And then we did recognize that there is some funding through the healthy and equitable communities. So I'd just ask maybe a consideration to take a look at if there's any way that that could go to help our special needs community, senior citizens community and stuff. So that's all I had. Just wanted to update you guys. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Pastor. Anyone else that would like to address the assembly? Okay. Ready? Go ahead. Whoever's online, go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Clayton Artaburn. I'm just calling to voice my concerns and lack of support for the timber harvest plan in Long Lake. I'm a property owner on Honeybee. My property is currently not quite bisected, but separated by West Abbey Road, which would be one of the access routes to access the timber. The borough currently does not hold legal easement across my property, which is one of the issues with West Abbey Road. So I would certainly have concerns with the borough allowing any sort of contractor to cross my property to access any of the timber. In addition, it, it doesn't take a genius to look at the piece of property situated between Honeybee and Lynn Lakes and realize that it's simply not suitable for this type of purpose. There's lots of land that's far more remote than this. With all due respect to the gentleman that, that runs the mill, there's lots better places to get wood than right between two recreational lakes in the heart of Willow. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Have anybody else, Caleb, online? Okay, one more person. Go ahead. Whoever's next online.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Eric Anderson. I'm from Palmer. I got a couple comments. One is on the, the, the land sale, or the tree, the tree sale, I guess. We have to look at a couple things on this specific issue, and, and one of them is, what does the borough intend to do with the land? And also natural habitat for wild resources, if they're not gonna do anything. The moose all migrate to the lower Sussetna Valley when there's heavy snow, and they rely on those birch trees. If the borough doesn't plan on developing the land, they should probably just let the, let the forest do what it's gonna do naturally and, and leave it as habitat for the wildlife. If they have development plans for it, then they should probably just plot it off and auction it off as a plot and let each plot person that buys it do what they please with the land, because most likely they're gonna clear enough to where it's sustainable and it's fire-wise, so it's not fire hazard. To just give it away as firewood, there's a lot better places we could do that, especially in places that have already burned, that are still good firewood, and places that are more of a fire hazard closer to urban communities. That's borough property owns. Secondly, the last thing I wanted to address is, I brought this up the chain to the federal level, to the state level, and everywhere else, and I just want to make you guys aware. When Russia invaded Ukraine in 2022, Senator Murkowski and Senator Sullivan initiated a ban on imported Russian seafoods, amongst other things. And to this day still, there's many entities and businesses within the Matsu Borough that are selling Russian-imported, specifically king crab. Our statewide fisheries have been shut down locally for the last two years. And then recently, the Permanent Fund Corporation has invested in Three Bears Corporation, and the Matsu Borough houses or holds most of the Three Bears locations in the state. My, my concern is, I don't know if the message is not getting past anybody, or if this is intentional, but we're not supposed to be selling Russian-imported seafoods, and Three Bears specifically, and including Fred Myers, they're selling Russian-imported king crab. And I have an issue with that, because my friends, family, and colleagues have all been stripped of resources locally. And this ban is supposed to be in place, and if there's anything you could do at the borough level to help mitigate this issue, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you have anybody else online? Anyone else here that would like to address the assembly on any subject? Okay, seeing no, then I will close the audience participation. The next item on our agenda is a consent agenda. Does the assembly have anything they want to pull?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I wasn't present for the beginning of the meeting there, so I don't know what's still on the consent agenda or isn't, but twenty-three dash oh four one and twenty-three dash oh four six, if those haven't been pulled, I'd like to pull them.
Okay, they have not been pulled, sir, so you'll go ahead and pull those. Any other items that the assembly would like to pull? Okay. So go ahead.
Resolution twenty-three zero four three, a resolution approving the revised scope of work for the property acquisitions for Fire Stations Project. Resolution twenty-three zero four four, a resolution establishing the minimum le, excuse me, the minimum level of funding for the Magnus Sussetna Borough School District for local sources for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. AM twenty-three zero two four, approval of utility relocate costs of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy cents to end star for the Midway Streets improvement, South Vicki Way, East Diamond Way, East Dewan Court, South Beggits Drive, South Hay Street, Green, and Green Street Circle Project. AM twenty-three zero two eight, approval to extend the completion date of contract number twenty-two one oh three B with Western Construction and Equipment for the right-of-way surveying and clearing services.
Deputy Mayor.
I move to approve the consent agenda as read in the record by the clerk.
Any objection? Okay, hearing none, and the consent agenda read by the clerk has been approved. Madam Clerk?
Resolution twenty-three zero four one, a resolution authorizing the borough manager to solicit bids for the Long Lake Road salvage timber harvest. It was pulled by Assembly Member Hale.
Assemblyperson Hale, will you go ahead and move so we can discuss?
Chair, I move to adopt twenty-three dash oh four one. I'd like to speak to it briefly, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, it just, it just sounds like maybe this, this sale needs to be reorganized, rethought, and, and brought back in a somewhat of a different format. There's a lot of opposition from the, you know, the local community chemical and a whole bunch of folks and everything. So maybe we take another look at it.
Okay, further discussion by the assembly. Yes, Assemblyperson Minky, go ahead.
Well, in addition to all the comments made by the folks, with one exception, nobody out there wants it. And I'm looking at this thing, and I was looking at a letter by Deborah Summer. And she's talking about the fact that the public notice stated that it would include the reduction of birch stocking as well as the removal of beetle-killed spruce trees, but it seems like it's not gonna be beetle-killed spruce trees. So if that's not happening, then people were, that was, that was not well put out there. The, the other thing is with the wetlands, don't the Corps of Engineers have to be involved in that somewhere along the line? And that report from the Alberta government basically says that deciduous trees are, will help control fires, whereas we know we've got an awful lot of that other kind of stuff out there, but. And the idea that, do they have to do this in the middle of this area? I mean, Alaska's a big place, and the borough's a big place. Isn't there someplace else they can do this that would not? If I was one of those people out there, I'd be leading the pack. So that's, that's just how I think about it. I think it's not a good idea. Thank you.
Further discussion. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, a lot of very valid concerns today. I will say, and I don't know that I've ever seen a timber sale with neighbors that there wasn't concerns. A lot of times you hear people say, why on borough land? What is the borough gonna do with it afterwards? It, it's the same thing if it's state land. You're not gonna see private sector, you know, individual homeowners with land that's doing this. The bottom line is, as mentioned before, we need to have material for trees, paper. You know, a lot of other things. Does it have to be this location? I'm not sure. I will say, if it is, if it is too remote of a location and the access isn't good, nobody's gonna bid on it, right? So sometimes you're in a position where there's no winning. You know, would, would I rather have this be a hundred and something acres? I think it's a hundred and thirty-seven. They're talking about cutting, give or take. Way farther out of Willow, of course, but if there's not good road systems for the trucks to get there and nobody bids on it, then we don't have, you know, we don't have any resources to go work with. So in my experience, I don't, I don't think I've ever seen one of these that wasn't. So in my experience, I don't think I've ever seen one of these that wasn't contentious. But at the end of the day, we do need to log. Is that, is this the right location? I don't know. There were some valid concerns tonight, and if we may, I'd like to ask the staff to speak to some of them so that we can make an informed decision tonight. With that.
You want them to speak. Did you want to call them for now?
Yeah, if that's all right.
Okay. Any objection to calling for stay? No? Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Assembly. My name is Emerson Kruger. I'm the Borough Natural Resource Manager. To speak to questions and comments that I've heard just during Assembly comments, I'd like to start with briefly how we got to where we are right now. And I'm going to be brief, so if it's too high a level or too fast, please ask, and I'll expand. But I'm trying to cram a lot into a short amount of time, so I don't waste your time. So in 2021, we came to you with some legislation, and part of the legislation was to get rid of a timber transport permit. And another part of that same legislation was to allow for timber salvage sales. And we made a pitch to do timber salvage sales outside of the five-year timber harvest schedule, because what we had seen over the last 10 years of five-year timber harvest schedules is we'd lay out these detailed schedules for timber harvest. We'd let everybody know where we were planning to have timber harvest. We'd spend a couple of years getting that schedule done, and then year after year, nobody would bid on the timber sales that were in the schedule. Right? I mean, it wasn't just me, it wasn't the guy before me, it was everybody going back to 2011, right? So pretty much the whole time we'd been doing the five-year timber harvest schedule, nobody's been buying our timber harvest. And so we wanted to try something new. We wanted to be more responsive to the timber values that we had. And so we said, let us do the salvage sales. Let us do it where we can find timber that the market seems to have demand for, and let us offer them over the counter. And that was approved in 2021. And since that time, we've been going around to the borough forest land and taking a look at what's there and getting an idea of the infrastructure and the proximity to the industry to see what's going to work, right? And so we've done that a few times now. We have six salvage timber harvests currently under contract. They've been under contract for varying amounts of time. Some of them are done, some of them are half-done, some of them are just getting started. And in the locations where we have these active salvage timber harvests, we haven't heard objections, and we haven't heard complaints from the neighbors. So that's how we got here. We saw some forest land that the borough owned in Willow. It seemed to have the right recipe of timber and access and proximity to infrastructure and the market. And so before we spend the time to figure out the details of how this timber is going to get logged, we make sure that it can comply with the State Forest Resource Practices Act, which are the state regulations that timber harvest has to comply with on public forest land. So that's the state and the borough forest land and its mothers. But for us, any timber harvest on our land has to comply with the state regulations. And the big thing they're looking at there are fish, wildlife habitat, water quality. So there's buffers, there are setbacks. The soundbite I have for you is that the state timber regulations provide some of the most restrictive riparian and fish habitat protections in the nation, right? That makes sense, because this is Alaska. We've got a lot of all of that. So we verified that this timber sale could meet the state regulations for timber harvest. We made it over that hurdle to move this thing forward. The borough has in its own code MSB 28.60. So that also requires compliance with FERPA, right? So we just went over that. It also has more regulations for buffers and then for the things that make logging obnoxious to the neighbors. We have borough code that restricts how obnoxious logging can be to the neighboring property owners. That's in 2860. So we evaluate the area that we're looking at for a salvage timber harvest, and we see if it can meet the borough requirements with what information we have in it. You know, we apply all the buffers from the state and the borough code, and we see what's left. And we get a sense of, is there enough volume there to cover the MOB costs of getting somebody to go there? And would there be enough left over for it to be worth their time to go and get that timber off the property? And if there's still a yes check next to that, then we go to public notice to see what the community has to say. And that's where we're at right now. There were some problems with the public notice. We shifted gears, and we've set it up so that there will be a second public notice if it gets moved forward tonight. Right? So we will fix that by doing a second public notice, and we'll bring legislation back to this body with the details of the harvest worked out. I'm getting a little ahead of myself here, but anyhow. So we had found this borough property, and it looked like timber harvest could happen there. We did the public notice. We heard significant objection from people. And now we're in front of the Assembly with a, do we put this one on the shelf? Or do we put it out to bid and see if anybody wants to buy it? So it would go out over the counter, right? So it would be made available on the borough webpage. There'd be a bid packet put together. The bid requirements pretty much require somebody to be able to meet the state logging regulations. They have to meet the borough insurance requirements. And it's not a permit that they would be bidding on. They'd be bidding on getting into a borough timber sale contract. And that's about a 36-page contract that spells out all the individual requirements under both the state regulations and the borough code. And so they would bid on that, and then we'd look at who is bidding and their history of logging in the borough, because we have that discretion in looking at these over-the-counter bids. Do they have a track record of performing timber harvest in the borough and not causing problems or violating the regulations, right? And so if we get a successful bidder on this timber harvest, then we have enough commitment to spend the time to figure out the access, where and what buffers are going to be on the ground. You know, the boundaries for the timber harvest would get marked generally by us. And we do this all the time, so we know what to look for. We'd get the details of that sale worked out in the detailed plan of operations that would have to get submitted to the State Division of Forestry. The State Division of Forestry has 30 days to send that detailed plan of operations to all the state agencies that regulate all the different resources that could be affected by logging. So the Department of Fish and Game reviews the Anadromous Waters safeguards in FERPA. They, the Fish, Fish and Game also look at the habitat requirements that are protected in the state regulations for logging. And those agencies get input on to the planned operations for the logging, right? And at the same time, we're bringing the detailed plan with the contract in front of this body to say, okay, we have this entity here that's bidding this much to buy this timber, and this is their plan to log it. So we're not there yet, and we haven't figured out those details yet. And that's some of the concern that people are expressing is they don't know what they're commenting on, you know? And the plan that was included with the resolution to direct staff to proceed with the sale is the plan as it's dictated by the state regulations and the borough code. So the buffers are there for the private property, the buffers are there for Anadromous Waters are present, the buffers are there for the wetlands, the buffers are there for the right-of-way. Those are all regulated buffers. They have to be there. But the fieldwork to fine-tune the buffers based on the steep slopes and, you know, wetland mapping being a little bit different than what's in front of you, that fieldwork hasn't been done yet, because we don't want to waste your time. If nobody's going to bid on this timber, we don't need to work out all the details on how it's going to get logged. A, we could be wrong, because somebody might do it different than what we think it needs to be done, because they're more experienced than we are. Or B, it's just not enough timber, or it's in the wrong spot, and nobody wants to touch it. So there's a lot of staff time. We don't put into these things to work those details out before we come here, in this case, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Just a minute. I recognize the Deputy Mayor, and then I'll go to you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of quick questions. I wanted to confirm if this were to pass tonight, and it goes forward, and somebody does bid, can the buffers be adjusted later by us before the contract is completely awarded? So when we talk about buffers from wetlands, we talk about buffers from neighbors' property. Are those like finalized right now, or can those still be adjusted at a later date?
Through the Mayor, to Assemblymember Young, the buffers right now are conceptual. So the buffers will get refined with the additional fieldwork. And then this body is a representative of the property owner can tell us what buffers you want.
Thank you. And then the other question I have is, right now, there's six under contract. Just curious, how many people bid on these? And of the six that are awarded right now, are they all six to one company, or is there two doing this, or three? And you may not even have this answer right now, but just an educated guess, are there multiple players in this arena?
We're seeing a steady increase as the years go by in the borough's timber offerings. Having been here for a while, I can say that we've gone from no interest in years past to a steady increase in interest. I don't have the exact numbers on the number of bidders, but...
Okay, now the hard question, and the one that I'm really concerned about. Do we have a, have we pre-selected somebody for this, or is that maybe just a misunderstanding in the market? Because if it hasn't even gone out to bid yet, and I don't know anything about poppers or, you know, but are they pre-selected? Is this really, you know, because that's concerning if so. So if you could speak to that.
So the timber right now hasn't even been offered for bid. And until it's offered for bid, there is no knowing who would end up being the first one through the door that can meet the minimum qualifications for the bid. There's more than a handful of potential operators that could bid on this timber, and it could be any one of them when we post this that step forward and say, that timber sale is going to work for me, and they're the first one through the door, and they're the responsive bidder. There's no guarantee it's going to be popper. There's no guarantee it's going to be anybody.
And when that does happen, say there's multiple people that do bid, we, of course, award it to the person willing to pay the most for it, correct?
So the...
Responsive, the highest responsive.
So there's a couple of different ways that we generally sell resources in the Land Management Division. There is the competitive sealed bid, which is how we generally sell our land. And that's where we set a minimum bid, and people submit sealed bids on whatever's for sale. And in that case, it's the most highest responsive bidder that would win that. When there's reduced interest, or reduced competition, or reduced value in what we're selling, we generally get less bang for the effort of setting up that competitive sealed bid sale, because it takes more setup. And so in those cases, we offer those lesser value or less interested parties resources for sale over the counter. And in those cases, we determine what the market value is of it, and we offer it that. And the first one to come in through the door and sign their name to pay the price, they get the bid. They win the sale.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Assemblyperson Hale, thank you for waiting.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the Mayor, to the staff. So just so I have this clear in my own mind, if this were to pass tonight, that is when you would go through and take the second look that, and then determine the final, the final terms of how this is all going to work. So we're still in a preliminary stage here. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's reassuring.
Okay, yes, Assemblyperson.
So would this be clearcut, thinning, taking out diseased and dead stuff? How, any ideas?
Good question. Through the Mayor, to Assemblymember Bernier. It would be, it would look like a clearcut in places, and it would look like a patch cut in others. The prescription for the property would be based on the stand as you're moving through it and the topography, right? So our experience with local loggers and their equipment is they like to avoid steep slopes, right? So if there are steep slopes on a property, we want to take advantage of that and set those trees aside so that you don't mess with what could turn into a big headache. And then there's your patch of trees for, you know, however many acres that hillside includes. And then down from that, you would see maybe more open areas, like would look more like a clearcut. So it wouldn't be completely taking all the trees off the property, and it would be a little bit more than just a handprint of clearing through the area. It's a lot easier to express it on a picture than it is to describe it. I mean, it's a little bit of both.
Thank you.
Assemblyperson McKee, go ahead.
Yeah, so a couple of things. What about that government of Alberta thing that was included in here that talked about when you do what you do with this deciduous trees than the ones that are hanging out there that are the actual tinder, the actual fuel? You have sort of taken away that protective factor. Is anybody thinking about that?
Through the Mayor, to Assemblymember McKee. There's a lot of information on fire in the boreal forest. And it's something I was trying to avoid, because it's a broad subject. But in a nutshell, our trees are pioneer species. If you think about it, this all used to be under ice, right? And then the ice melted away, the glaciers moved back up into the mountains, and we had bare ground. And the bare ground slowly builds up into the forest. And that's how it happens here, and it's well documented. There's lots of information on it. And what resets boreal forest is wildfire.
I know that, yeah.
Right? So the thing that manages forest health on a large, on a landscape level in Alaska is wildfire. And when humans artificially suppress the wildfire, you see these stands of forest that go past when they have more dead wood standing than they do have new growth. And that's where a lot of our forest is. If you look at our most recent timber inventory, it's a clear majority, it's like 80% of our timber has gotten past that point where the amount of woods that's dying on the trees is bigger than the amount of wood that's growing. And what we need in order to turn that forest health around, the reset button for forest health for us is a timber harvest. And so we see these over-mature stands of birch, and we want to do something about it. And we don't have the money to pay somebody to do it, and so we try to sell it. We try to get somebody to come in and cut it up. Predominantly, it's firewood, you know, and there's several trees per acre that are of a higher quality that get, you know, like some of the trees from Yoder got sent north to be made into wood bowls for the tourists, right? So we do have good timber out there, but most of the trees are to the point where they are more likely to burn than younger growth. And by hitting the reset button on the forest and having that big disturbance, that's not a wildfire, it's a controlled timber harvest, then the younger trees that come in after that, you know, through the forest regen requirements of the state logging regulations, the fire danger of the younger forest is much less than the old forest. And that's kind of wrote in natural science for forest management, for boreal forest.
I understand. I agree with, I've supported that ever, since ever. But talk to the people who live there, talk to the people that went through Millis Reach and the, what is it, Sockeye Fire and all that kind of thing. They're not real, they don't care about that. It's like, we're doing fire suppression in my backyard, and maybe my house will burn down. So that's one objection that I have to that. The other thing, it sounds like you've really done all the work and all the homework and all of that stuff. And but when it comes to the final analysis and the people don't want it, I just don't think you can just say, screw y'all, we've done this, what we're going to do. So I just, I have a problem with that, and that's just very fundamental to my rights of the people, just saying.
Deputy Mayor, okay.
That report you mentioned Alberta, is that out of Alberta, Canada? And what that means, or is that like a company or a firm or?
I believe they mean the country.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious. And yeah, I do, I share in the concerns of folks that are bummed that it's close to them. But I mean, we start talking 100-foot buffers, too. That's a, just for visual, that's a third of a football field. foot buffers too. That's a, just for visual, that's a third of a football field. That's a pretty big setback. I don't know. I, I guess, I guess there's two ways to look at this. We can only select borough lands that are really far away from people to try to bring to this point, right? And we probably will get no, you know, resistance comments, negative, right? But we're also going to get no bids because you're not going to be able to access them. So I don't know. This is a happy medium. This does not approve the project tonight. It gives the staff the opportunity to do the homework, do some more research. We'll get an opportunity later if, if somebody even bids on it to set forth the boundaries here. And I think we're setting a very dangerous precedent if we don't pass this tonight.
Assemblyperson Farnum? No, okay. Further discussion by the assembly? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thought you were maybe going to be done early tonight, but so, so much for that. This is sort of another question for staff. I definitely came into tonight supporting this, but listening to testimony, I have some questions and I, I don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot financially, like lower surrounding property values or, or for the timber industry. I'm concerned, I mean, I've seen backlash against a single timber sale, shutdown, timber sales across the borough in, in past years. And so sensitive to timber sales that might, you know, cause more of a reaction that goes beyond the particular sale. But it's sort of on the question of, so if we pass this tonight, then the next step, is that actually like we would go out to bid? So we would have somebody who says, "Yes, I do want this property" and then we would be in the position of saying, accepting that bid or, or not? Am I understanding that correctly?
Go ahead, sir.
You are.
Okay. Uh, just that causes me a little concern because then whoever that bidder is, you know, they've put the work in and then, you know, we're potentially saying no, we're potentially saying yes, but it just, I, I don't like to make people do a bunch of work and then not be able to do it. And then, so to back up on the salvage sale, you said we've done six of these since we passed it. And my impression, but let me know, is all of those have been implemented by companies coming to us and saying, "We'd like to log this area," which was part of the reason we passed that because it gave us the flexibility to authorize those instead of having to go through the timber sale. But, but if all those previous salvage sales been initiated by companies saying, "We'd like to log this piece of property" and, and then has this piece of property, was, was this initially looked at because a, a logging company was interested in it? Or is it something the borough chose out of the blue without somebody expressing interest?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. The borough staff picked this as a, what they believed a suitable location for a timber harvest. There was no industry leading us to this property. This is based on our experience over the last few years of what works for a salvage sale.
Follow up?
And then those...
Person Nowers?
Those previous six salvage sales, had those been initiated by the borough choosing a location or by a, a company expressing interest in that particular piece of property?
So there, there was only one timber harvest where the industry said, "We'd like to cut here" and it sparked a very long conversation over many months. And that was the very first one up off of Yoder Road. The, the remainder of the timber sales that are on the books under contract, those were all areas identified by borough staff.
Okay, thank you for that. And, you know, I guess I just, I really, it, this one's hard for me because I agree with Assemblymember Young, you know, you gotta, it's gotta be of interest to the industry, but I also think we have so much acreage in the borough. And I, this one, I hate to drag a company through. It sounds like we have a company that's definitely interested in bidding and I hate to drag them through the process and then shut them down. I guess I just have too many questions at this point on this one in terms of what it would do. I mean, maybe that's a question to staff is, are we potentially going to lower property values in that area by allowing a logging operation that's going to generate $5,000 and certainly some jobs and, and business for the company? But is there any sort of, from your perspective, concern about the, the effect on surrounding property values?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. In our experience, the logging operations in the borough are so short-lived that they have no effect on the surrounding property values. This, this is maybe a couple of months to a couple of years at most. And we haven't, we haven't, in the timber harvests that have happened in the past, we haven't seen any effect on the surrounding property values. And we have timber harvest data going back decades.
Okay, thank you very much.
Assemblyperson?
Question for staff.
Emerson.
Emerson. Audience, I'm sorry, this is a time just for discussion on the assembly members. Go ahead, sir.
Has, in recently, last couple of years, you kind of probably keep polls. So what is the, the prices been like? Has it been steady? Has it increased for the firewood that people use to heat their homes?
So through the mayor, the, the commercial price of firewood, we've seen steadily increase. And we attribute that mainly to the decrease in the number of operators providing commercial firewood and also an increase in demand. So the supplies dipped a little bit because fewer people are providing commercial firewood. And there's lots more people in the borough that have wood stoves and like to have bonfires. So...
And does this makes firewood that people heat their homes with more affordable when you have some opportunity like this?
I, I believe it's simple economics in that if we can increase supply, it's going to help with the price.
Okay. And the second thing, in the past, you said there's about, by default, about a hundred foot buffer, correct?
Correct.
If you did talk to a concerned citizen who is, says that's too little or they, their property would be visible, if you had to ask them, say, "What would the number need to be?" For them to say, "Yes, I'm happy with that." Do you know what that number is?
I, I imagine it would vary depending on the landowner. We also have a provision in borough code to decrease the buffers if people want to have the timber harvested closer to their property. So we, we see it go both ways. Some people want a bigger buffer and some people don't want any.
Okay. So if somebody did increase, said, "Hey, I want it cleared right to my property" in order to prevent the fire or whatever, you would be willing to help them with that?
Correct.
Okay. So there is no number that says, somebody says, "Okay, 500 and then I'll be happy with that." That's not what you hear? There's another number that you hear besides the 100?
You know, I, when, when the borough code was written, there was a lot of discussion on what buffer was appropriate for private property. And the number that they arrived when the code was drafted and it was adopted by the assembly was 100 feet. As far as what we've heard from the neighbors, I mean, we, I, I can't say that there's any average.
Okay. So if we decided to move forward with this, but then people that got majority of that line of the, you know, property and said, "Hey, we're requesting it to be 150 or 200 after we pass this tonight," but if we pass this tonight, would we be able to make that adjustment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted to speak to something real quick in case I put some confusion in the market earlier. So I was talking about those six. I think one of the assembly members might have thought that there's only been six. Since we've adjusted this a few years ago, there's been more than that, quite a few, I believe. But a lot of them are done. They're completed in a couple of months and shut out or whatever. There's just six currently going right now. So we've, we've done others since, you know, we made this easier to do. I don't think there's any debating that it needed to be made easier to do. It was, you know, we, we made that adjustment a couple of years ago. It hadn't, it had been very difficult for a long time to do this and mainly on how they were transported. And that's why nobody would bid on anything. It, but anyway, I just wanted to make sure I didn't confuse anybody. There's six currently going right now, but there's been more than that previous to this. So that's all.
Further discussion by any of the assembly members or questions? Assemblyperson McKee, go ahead.
Yeah, just, just one more thing. You know, we've talked about the size of the borough, the size of the state. People, a, a logger can go somewhere and it might cost him a few more bucks to, to, to get, to get her done. You know, the transport and all that kind of thing. That's what he does for a living. The people that live there, they can't just say, "Well, you know what? We're, we're SOL, so out of luck, so we'll just move." That's not how people build their lives. And that bothers me. Just throwing it out there.
Further discussion? Is there any objection to passing Resolution 23-041? Okay, I'm ready.
And clerk?
Members in the room can go ahead and vote.
Okay, the motion is to adopt Resolution 23-041, correct?
Mm-hmm. Assemblymember Nowers.
Yep.
Assemblymember Hale.
So.
It passed with Assemblymember McKee, Bernier, and Hale opposed.
Okay. The, Assemblyperson Hale, you also polled one other resolution?
She voted yes. Okay, bear with me just a second.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm moved to adopt Resolution 23-046. I'd like to speak to it briefly if I may.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
Yeah. So my understanding is the way that this bill is currently written in the legislature is that it would negate some key provisions of Breeze Law, which is a law that was adopted after a young lady was killed by her boyfriend. And so it sounds to me like the legislature needs to take a second look at this thing, rewrite it so that it, that it doesn't negate that, those provisions. And, you know, there was a, was a lot of support for Breeze Law when, when the legislature adopted it back then. And I think they need to, like I said, take another look at this, figure out the way to write this so that it doesn't, that it doesn't have that impact. So I can't support this at this time.
Further discussion by the assembly? Assemblyperson McKee, go ahead.
I'd like to ask Mr. Hale, what is it that, Tim, that you're exactly saying about Breeze Law? Has it been, you're, you're thinking it's been watered down or pulled out or something? What, what's your take on that?
Uh, I don't, I'm, I'm not exactly certain. I can explain it very well, but my understanding is there's some educational portion of Breeze Law that, that requiring the, the affirmative opt-in would, would negate a portion of that, of that Breeze Law, the educational component, where they kind of teach kids about how they can, how they can recognize and report, you know, abusive, abusive relationships, abusive behavior, and also the, some, something to do with confidentiality. And so I think they need to take a look at that and, and figure out how they can, you know, continue to keep Breeze Law intact while they, while they look at this other issue.
I, I am a teacher in the public school system and I specifically teach health and specifically teach Breeze Law and Aaron's Law. They're, and they're, they, what, what is required is that we notify the parents that this is happening. We make the material available to them so that they can see it. The opt-in portion of that says, it, it's where you are affirmatively saying, "I want my child to, to be, to get this." Because when you, when it's just a no thing, well, the kids just don't bring the papers back and say, "Well, my parents want me to watch this one." Maybe they don't. The whole thing with the Breeze Law thing and Aaron's Law though, is just basically letting the parents know what we're teaching. It's, makes it absolutely transparent. And I am so in favor of, of this bill. As a teacher, if it would, I would die literally before I would withhold information from a parent. That is a sacred trust. And if any school, district, system, borough, or whatever else thinks that they can get between the parent and the kid and that they can keep me from telling the parent, the things that parents need to know, they got another thing. This, this is a good law. It should be passed. There is, it's, some people say, "Well, you know, it's redundant." Okay, I'm okay with redundancy because it's all about the protection of the kids and the keeping sacrosanct the parental right of the education of their child. Feel very strongly about it and I think it should pass.
Further discussion? Okay, so I know we probably have an objection. Is that correct? Assemblyperson Hale?
Yes.
Okay. So Madam Clerk?
The members in the room can go ahead and vote.
So a yes vote would approve the support?
Assemblymember Young and Bernier? A yes vote would approve the resolution in support of House Bill 105. A no vote would, okay. Assemblymember Hale?
No.
Assemblymember Nowers?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. It passed with Assemblymember Hale opposed.
Ready? So there is no unfinished business. There are no vetoes. We're ready for the introductions.
Introduction for public hearing on May 2nd is Ordinance 23034, Ordinance 23035, Ordinance 23037, Ordinance 23038. And for public hearing on April 27th, excuse me, April 25th, April 27th and May 4th is Ordinance 23023.
And Deputy Mayor?
I move to introduce the legislation as written in the record by the clerk and set the public hearings for April 25th, 2023, April 27th, 2023, May 2nd, 2023, and May 4th, 2023, respectively.
Any discussion? Any objections to the introductions and the setting of the public hearings? Okay. Hearing none, and the legislation is introduced. Deputy Mayor, vacancy report?
I move to confirm the mayor's recommendations as follows. West Lakes Fire Service Area Number 136, Kenneth Widmer. Chase Trail Service Area, Johnny Murdoch.
Is there any objections to, or any discussion, any objections to the vacancy report? Hearing none, the vacancy report is approved. We do not have any other new business. There are no referrals. We did the one reconsideration. I don't think there's another one. So, Assemblyperson Hale, parting comments, sir?
Uh, yeah, yeah, thank you. Actually, when we talk about these timber sales and stuff, one of the things I would really like to see us do is move toward, more towards the Scandinavian method of, of, of managing our forests where instead of these short-term kind of salvage projects or whatever, we, we move, we move into like more of a long-term contract with folks to, to harvest the, to harvest the biomass off of these, off of these parcels in a, in a rotating, in a rotating schedule. You know, the, the boreal forests up here are an incredible source, a resource for biomass, for biomass of all types, whether you're talking, you know, board feet or you're talking, you know, pellet, pellet stove type generation or even bioplastic herds, you know, to, to make, to make all kinds of, all kinds of plastic materials out of. And so I, that's one of the things that I would really like to see us do is kind of move away from this, this, this timber salvage sale kind of mode of doing things and more into the Scandinavian long-term forest management long-term forest management type method. That's all I got tonight, thanks.
Assemblyperson Nowers, comments?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to apologize again for not being able to be there in person, I'm still recovering from my back injury, and then also wanted to apologize to Assemblymember Bernier, I know I said I would support you, and I would have on a motion to postpone, my support couldn't extend to having District Two pay for an LID in a different district, so just, you know, on that issue though, I do think we need to take another look at the percentage of people, minimum that's required to force other people in the neighborhood to pay for a service they don't want, so maybe I'll look forward to giving you a call and talking some more about that, thank you.
Okay. Assemblyperson Fauna? Comments?
Thank you, everyone. That was a very enjoyable beginning of our meeting today, where we honored our local champions, and we are made out of champions, and, you know, even if it means staying here late, or whatever it is, been tearing people out, I appreciate all the people who were here, spoke up, and everything that we do, and want to wish a blessing and an amazing evening to everyone.
Deputy Mayor, comments?
Yeah, I wanted to take a minute and agree with Tim on his vision for a long-range plan. I agree, I think that'd be a great idea, I think probably all of us would agree, but let's not forget, we're in this situation, because it was basically made impossible to do for a very long time. And the last thing any of us want to see is, I mean, I was so grateful last year that it rained all summer, because we didn't have to worry about a forest fire. That was luck, and then we just had one of the top five snow years in the last 50 years, that's awesome, that's going to help prevent some snow or some fires this year as well, the rivers will be high, the melt-off will take longer than normal. But, you know, our backs are against the wall a little bit on this, because of the big pause that we had, and so, you know, again, back to my point earlier, you got two options, put it out there in the middle of nowhere, where there's no good access, and nobody's going to bid on it, or put it where it might be close to a few people, and I think we set a very dangerous precedent, if we start catering to a very small percentage of the population in the Matsui Borough, we just don't want it to happen three or four or 500 feet from their property. So, I don't know, moving forward, I just, you know, I'm glad it passed tonight, we'll find out if it has true merit in the coming days, as we, in months, as we find out if somebody, A, does bid on it, and B, if they do, we sit down and we look at the setbacks and everything, but I just, I think we're setting a dangerous precedent, if we just shut down every single thing that has some people come in here and say they don't want it in their backyard. There are certain times that you can do nothing to make somebody happy when something's happening close to their house. There'll be nothing you can ever do to make them happy, and, you know, if we want to be, we want to be closed for business and act like Anchorage, then by all means, let's do it, but I don't think it's a good idea.
Madam Clerk, parting comment?
I did forget to mention earlier during the clerk's report, those of us that have gone out to Willow for public hearings are usually provided with dinner, that is not happening this year, so please don't come hungry. Please eat before you come.
Mr. Manager, parting comment?
Just very quickly, so the borough's proposed budget is on the website as of this afternoon, you have budget books, public hearings start next week, so we're in it for sure now, but just so that it's out there for public consumption and consideration as we approach these public hearings. Have a good evening, thanks.
Mr. Attorney, parting comments? Okay, Assemblyperson McKee, parting comments?
Yeah, I was listening to what Rob was saying there, and a lot of that I agree with, but when you, when I think of the word catering, that sound, it sort of sounds like pandering, and I don't like that connotation, because as far as I'm concerned, catering to the will of the people who are affected, that's just right in front of my mind all the time. So, I understand what you're saying, and we burn wood, for crying out loud, so I'm all for cutting down the stuff that needs to be cut down, but I worry about the fire, and I worry about the people, because they can't just pick up and leave, you can't just pop in and say, hey, we're going to change your life and turn it over, and because it's in the interest of business, so that, to me, that's, I'm just always upfront on that. I'd also like to thank Jackie Gophorth, because she risks people getting upset with her, she's not going to quit on this, and I hope she doesn't, because it has to be done, and I, Jackie, I just want you to know, in your camp, and I'm sure we all are, it's got to be done, and you're carrying the flag, so good for you, thanks.
Assemblyperson Two, parting comments?
I think that's right, that nobody ever wants it done in their backyard. I lived through the Miller's Reach fire, but of course, my place burned down, and that's because of ground fire, which most of the places out there, that's what happened, the trees were burning, and they went over and got some other dumb, some trees, so to do these salvage sales, what that's telling you is that the wood's junk, and all it's doing is sitting there getting ready for a fire. So, I really appreciate us taking the time and figuring out how to help mitigate the fires that all this junk wood causes, and then if we're going to sell junk wood 200 miles in the middle of nowhere, well, no one's going to get it. So, and really, if it's way out there, does it really matter to us that live in all of our homes? So, I think, get it all, wherever we live, get all of that wood out, make us safe, and then if they need to go more, then go out further, so, so I'm just happy that we figured out how to get some people interested in this crappy wood, to help us not have to pay to get it taken out, and then, and then we're not losing property or people because of fires. That's all.
Assemblyperson here, parting comments?
I want to thank everybody for coming out, and of course, dear Lord, may you bless our borough, may your enduring love bring our communities together, may we work together to bring love and peace to our fellow citizens, may we spread your will. We want to thank you for all your blessings, we want to thank you for all the good things that you do for us, Lord, thank you for the hard times, so we can be humbled and grow closer to you. Please help the less fortunate, the addicted, the insecure, bring us all closer together, Lord, please bless our schools, our children, our families, and thank you so much, in Jesus' name, amen.
The only parting comment I have, I think the majority of you did receive an invite for grand opening for a commercial building in Wasilla, and so there probably will be 1,000 people there or more, so I don't know for sure how many we will have there, but just so that you are aware of that. So, we will adjourn at 9:37?